Members of the public, members of the planning board staff. Welcome to the Wednesday, May 12th, 2021. Planning Board of Cohasset Meeting. I will just indicate a couple of things and then turn it over to Lauren to explain how the public can participate. And then we'll begin with the first item. Basically, we have four public hearings that we have continued and we'll be addressing them this evening. And there's a small amount of business at the end. Lauren, can you please notify people how they can commute? Comment during the meeting? Thank you.
Certainly. Thank you. My name is Lauren Lynn. I'm the planning director. For those who are not familiar tonight, or any of the, our policy for a public comment during these Zoom meetings is that we ask for you to input your name and address into the question and answer function. You can either write comments in directly to the planning board, or you can just indicate that you'd like to speak at the appropriate time for the public comment for each of the public hearings. We will then, we can take the questions in the order or the comments in that they're received. And if you indicated you'd like to address the board, we will promote you so you have the ability to turn your camera and microphone on to address the board. We do have a three-minute maximum for all public stated comments. Any comments that have been received throughout the email or week, or anytime these public hearings have been opened are also part of the record. Just for, you know, so the public is aware of that. And then finally, I'll just just state again, name and address for the record. We appreciate that. And then I'll turn it back to Madam Chair if you want to address any comments that may public comment for things that are not on the agenda. Otherwise, if your comments are for items that are on the planning board agenda, please hold them and we'll take them when that public hearing is opened. Thank you.
All right. So is there anything from the public that is not on the agenda that we need to be notified of?
I'm seeing no hands raised, nothing in the question and answer at this time.
All right. Thank you. Then let's proceed. We will take up.
Do we have to do a roll call?
Yes, we do. So roll call Eric Potter. I'll move on to Clark Brewer.
Clark Brewer here.
Tom Callahan.
Tom Callahan is here.
Paul Grady.
Paul Grady here.
Amy Glassmeyer. Eric Potter.
Eric Potter's here.
Thank you. So let's begin with our first item at 7:00 PM, which is a public hearing continuation of the Cohasset zoning bylaws for an application for site plan review filed by Mr. John Chiavo. The subject property is 147 South Main Street, which continued from 4:14. Could the representatives of this application please make themselves noted known and indicate who will be speaking first?
I just promoted Adam Brodsky. Thank you. Madam Chair, we have attorney Adam Brodsky here, Jeff Hassett from Morse Engineering. We have the applicant John Chiavo, and then we have Patrick Brennan, our peer reviewer from Amory Engineers.
All right. So we'll begin by asking the applicant, is there new information to present?
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is Adam Brodsky. I'm an environmental and land use lawyer with Rowan, Tatchu and Morgan, and I represent the applicant. And as Ms. Lynn noted, we have Jeff Hassett from Morse Engineering, our professional engineer and Mr. Chiavo, but we should also have Dick Rockwood from Rockwood Design, our architect. And if you could please promote him.
He should be joining momentarily. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Madam Chair, there was additional information that was submitted to the board. We provided you with a copy of the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection Permanent Solution Statement Submittal that closed out the release of oil and hazardous materials associated with the fire. We also provided you with a copy of what we call the parking variance. It's some question as to whether actually it is a parking variance that was issued in April of 1991 concerning vehicle storage on the site, which has been reviewed and was the subject of discussion with the zoning board of appeals. And we have provided you with a set of the architectural plans that have been stamped by a registered architect. And from my notes of our last meeting, the outstanding questions principally concerned the architectural plans, which is why we invited Mr. Rockwood to attend. So he could answer those questions and present as needed. And so that is the additional information that we submitted.
Thank you. Before we begin with Mr. Rockwood, would you please give the planning board an update on your conversation with the ZBA? So that we're apprised of what your conversations have gone been before this ZBA?
Oh, thank you. The zoning is I want, it's not complicated, but there are a number of issues that the zoning board of appeal is tackling. Obviously, we're looking for a special permit to extend certain non-conformities in the site, both respect to dimensional variances as well as respect with respect to uses. And at the end of our last meeting, I think the, the only issue that was outstanding for which they requested additional information, they wanted some additional historical information regarding parking at the front of the site. That particular parking variance actually concerned parking at the rear of the site, not the front of the site. Because we are, we are proposing parking at the front of the site in lieu of having the building at the front of the site where it was originally located. You'll recall that the building was formerly located on the street. And it's our judgment that it'd be advantageous to the town and the neighborhood to move it towards the back of the site and then have our parking at the front of the site. So that's the last piece of information. So we're putting together a package of additional information documenting, again, of the parking of multiple vehicles at the front of the site as part of the non-conforming historic use.
Thank you. So you'll be going back to the ZBA?
Correct.
And what, when, what's that date going to be?
June 1st. It's June 1st.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Orin.
And thank you, Jen. All right then, Mr. Rockwood, would you like to begin? And please introduce yourself.
There you go. Hi, I'm Dick Rockwood. My company's Rockwood Design located in Marshfield. I've done the architectural drawings for Mr. Chiavo for this building, for this site. So it's a mixed use with the retail on the first floor and an apartment, and three apartments on the second floor of the building with three separate entrances. Each of the units has a small balcony for a little bit of exterior function. And I think we have the size of the building and the math is on my plans, which are being pulled up now. So this front elevation here, the South Main Street is what you see when you approach coming in the driveway. And we park on the, the front and which Jeff will probably go through on his plan and on the side, on the left side of the building. So the other left side of the building is the other entrance to the other lower level and the upstairs, the door for the upstairs. They're all separate entrances to the apartments. So the, the total retail space we're looking at is about 2,149 square feet. And the, the total residential of all three units combined, they average about 900 square feet each. So we're looking at 2,700 square feet for the apartments. You know, the building is pretty much, you know, clapboarded colonial style. A white gray, sort of a weathered gray look and a black roof is what we're proposing at this time. That's what we've been discussing. There's a little bit of signage in the front of the building for the retail spaces and then possibly one on the side. And I think that's about it. They're two-bedroom units, each one of the apartments. And pretty much all one-floor. So as I said, a little, a little four-foot by 10-foot or 14-foot balcony on, on each one, just to have that little outside space. So there are no other decks or other stairs to the ground. The stairwells have the proper egress, you know, which would be fire-rated. It's a sprinkled building. So it's pretty compact. And there was, there is a little on the first floor behind the retail spaces. There is some outdoor access to a couple of storage units for each of the apartments, you know, things like bicycles and kayak or whatever, but each unit has a little store. So those pertain to the upstairs plus the mechanical room downstairs for the sprinkler system. And I don't know if I have much more to add. That's the basic building.
All right. Thank you very much. I think what we'll do is just proceed with all of the applicants' presenters and then we will open it up to the planning board.
Do you want to get after, after they make their initial presentation, do we want to get comments from Mr. Brennan? And, and then have the planning board? A peer review letter?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, this is Adam Brodsky. I don't know if Jeff Hassett has any additional information to offer. We thought that the focus this evening was principally on the architecture, but Jeff, do you have anything to add? And Jeff, you are muted.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. We have not submitted any new information pertaining to the site plan since we last met on April 14th. We had submitted site plans the day of that hearing. So at that point, you had not had adequate time to review them. The revisions were fairly minor. We added inspection ports to the subsurface, subsurface system. We modified the photometric plan. We provided information on the dumpster enclosure. We added an erosion control plan. And, you know, that was really the extent of it. Though that revision has been reviewed by Amory Engineering, he submitted a letter on April 14th noting that we had addressed all of his comments, but I'll let him speak to that further.
All right. Let me ask, were you, have you gone before Concom?
Yes, we have gone in front of conservation. We, we're not. I think they're, I don't expect any major revisions. I think they had a couple of very minor things, but we did get continued. We have another meeting next week, I believe.
Okay. Thank you. I didn't notice where the utilities are going to be located.
Well, you'll have the water and sewer lines being replaced coming off of South Main Street as well as a gas line.
All right. And the, the electrical utilities are coming in from the back?
From South Main as well. I'll pull that up. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. So yeah, sewer and gas coming off of South Main Street. And yes, I'm sorry, water. We are bringing the water off of Spring Street. And electric. Let's see. We don't have a note on this sheet, but I would have to get back to you on that.
All right. Thank you. So then if there's, I guess it would be Mr. Brennan next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pat Brennan with Amory Engineers. As Mr. Hassett explained, I reviewed a previous iteration of the plan set and submitted a letter to the board. That was dated April 8th. They subsequently made some revisions and I issued a second letter on April 14th. The majority of my comments had been, my comments have pretty much been addressed. I would just note a couple of a couple of items. Item number four, my original comment was that the entire site would essentially be infilled. An elevation raised by one or two feet. And my, my request was the applicant's engineer provide documentation that the filling in the flood zone would not adversely affect the adjacent properties and the compensatory flood storage would not be required. In, in speaking with Mr. Hassett subsequent to that comment, the, the flood plain associated with this property, the flooding source is from Cohasset Harbor. So it's a tidal flood situation flooding source. So when you have a tidal flooding source from the ocean, compensatory storage is not required. So I noted that in my, in my last letter and I just wanted to make that clear. They also did, did lower the site a little bit, maybe another six inches or so. So there's not quite as much fill as they originally proposed, but but the majority of the site still will be filled. The my comment six was related to groundwater separation to the stormwater BMPs. And basically, as you may be aware, the stormwater management standards of the NAS DEP require a minimum of two feet of separation between the bottom of infiltration system and seasonal high groundwater. They didn't have that on the original proposal. And what they've done since then is the, they're taking all their infiltration credit. I believe it's in the rain garden and the subsurface chamber system that they have proposed for the roof drains. So they have porous asphalt on the site. However, they're not taking credit for infiltration through that. So technically, they don't need to provide that two feet of separation. However, that, that will drain when the groundwater is down. And one of my comments was in relation to a 10-foot offset from the proposed building, which is required by the stormwater standards with infiltration. And even though the porous asphalt is within 10 feet of that, the bottom of the porous asphalt is below the slab elevation of the building. So any infiltration that happened through the porous asphalt would not adversely impact that. There's no basement to, to have it adversely impact. So I'm, I'm comfortable with that. And then my last comment was in relation to snow storage. They did show snow storage areas on the site. However, the snow storage is fairly limited on the site and it's my opinion that snow removal will likely be required, especially during more, you know, larger snowstorms. So I just wanted to make that note for the board to consider as well. My other comments in relation to the drainage and and lighting and things of that nature have been addressed to my satisfaction at this point. We have any other questions?
Well, would any of the planning board members like to ask any questions in general, Mr. Brennan? If I don't hear from anyone, I would like to know, is this site got a history of flooding?
I'm not aware of any flooding on the site. It is within the 100-year FEMA floodplain, however.
And is, isn't there a, a stream on the back end of the property?
Yeah, about 100 feet off-site to the north is a perennial stream that flows to the harbor. So the, the, the building, any building to be constructed on this lot would have to be about, that would have the first floor of the slab about a foot higher than the previous building in order to be compliant with the FEMA building code requirements. So that, that's the reason the grade is coming up.
I see. All right. Thank you. So planning board members, would you like to speak generally to the project? Clark Brewer?
Yeah, in, in looking at the site plan and the architectural plans, I've, I've got something that I need clarification on. The, the architectural plans are dated 20, it says ZBA set 28th of January. And I thought there was, I don't see it in our planning board applications, another architectural set. I thought there was another architectural set that we looked at, the original one that was dated the 21st of January. And then I thought there was a subsequent updated architectural drawing set.
Yes, Mr. Brewer, you should have it architectural set dated ZBA set May 4, 2021, which we submitted.
Okay, I, I don't see it in our list of documents. There's a photometric plan.
So we, we had the same problem with the zoning board of appeals at the last hearing. So actually, I made certain and confirmed with both Ms. Orin and Ms. Lynn that both the ZBA as well as the planning board had all of the recent plans, including the architectural plans, because I wanted to make sure again that everyone has everything. Apparently, my, my efforts have failed, but we clearly submitted that and I requested that it be placed in the packages for both the ZBA and the planning board.
If I could add to that, the current site plans include the photometric plan. So if you're looking at, looking at a set, an individual sheet for the photometric, that might be dated. The site plan should be dated revised April 12th.
Looks to me like in our, our dating, it is the 5th of April is our site plan documents that we have.
That's correct.
But, but I don't see any updated architectural drawings. I, I do have comments about the, about the building regarding the handicap accessibility. In particular, the, the site plan appears that there's there's, there's no accessible route from the handicap parking spot to the entrances in the building. And there's something called proposed landscape that looks like it may interfere with the, with the, the building entries.
I can address that.
Yeah, go ahead.
So let me, let me pull it up again. In the front, in the front of, in the front of the building, we have a handicap space with a, with a loading area.
Yeah.
And it's the, it is a five-foot wide sidewalk with a vertical curb along the face of the building. There's a break in that curving with a ramp here to get which is the accessible route.
Okay, that makes sense. And then with the architectural plans, the, the internal part of the building, it did show handicap accessible, it showed bathrooms, but it didn't look like they were handicap accessible for the retail space. And then I'm, I'm not sure. I'm, I'm not sure about the requirements for the three units, whether they need to be handicap accessible or be able to be made handicap accessible. I know the handicap access code has a requirement for like townhouses where you have to, you know, form out a, a frame out a closet so you could put a like a single occupant residential elevator in. But, but I'm not sure what, how the numbers work in terms of the three units for a project, whether there's a requirement under the handicap accessible code for any of the units to be. You know, there's like class, class one and class two or type one and type two residential units in the handicap code. And some of those, some of those have to be fully accessible and some of them have to be able to be made accessible. So I don't have the most current plans in in the, the the, the submittal list either for April 14th or, or for today. So I'm not sure what the, what the latest internal accessibility resultant is, but maybe the architect could talk about what his research was for accessibility for the units, either to get to the units and then within the units.
I could just address the plan set. All the documentation is listed on the active planning board website. And I did send that to Mr. Brodsky yesterday. Notice if there's something in this. So if there's something missing in that list, then I do apologize if there is oversight, but that was, that's the full documentation list that the board has available.
Well, I, I do recall, I do recall seeing an updated architectural plan set because the the ZBA set had a bunch of stuff from what looked like to be another job like you know, the, the second, let me just pull it up. Like there was town of Milton stuff in it and but that's the only architectural set that I can see, I can get to from the active planning board application section. So somehow it fell off, somehow the updated architectures fell off and, and that's mainly where my questions were. I mean, I will, I will say that the, the egress windows, I think I brought up an issue of egress windows. The Anderson window that is referenced isn't an egress window, but Massachusetts code, and I just checked this allows in their ninth edition, an opening that's 20 by 24 and, and the, the applicant's 28 by 46 windows seem like it's maybe close. Although I can't, I wouldn't want to confirm that myself. I'd want the, the design team to do that.
Mr. Brewer, invite Mr. Rockwood to speak to your issues.
Thank you. Let's see. Yeah. We could we could, excuse me, just a minute there. Hold on, Pat. We could do a lift if we needed to in one of the units. And I think that would be all that's required. The windows do meet the egress code.
Yeah, it's either, it's either 20 by 24 in either direction.
Right. And they do. The system I would have on here.
Good.
And, and as far as as far as the downstairs in the retail spaces, that is a handicap bathroom. It doesn't show the circle on it, but it meets the requirements of the handicap bathroom.
Okay, because it's smaller than the single occupant handicap bathroom shown in the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board. It might meet some of the handicap accessible bathrooms for ADA, but I, I can't say that for sure.
Right. It will, and it will all be detailed out and it will meet the requirements of that.
Right. But I think it'll have to be quite a bit bigger than what you show.
Yeah, I'm not sure. On the retail space, I think they're adequate. They're usually the six foot six by about seven foot eight. Whatever it is, this doesn't have the dimensions on it, but they will.
Yeah, the previous plans had the handicap bathrooms that looked like they were smaller than that. So that's something to just.
And, and the plans we're working with are the 5-4 plans.
5-4, yes. Yeah, I, I haven't seen them.
They were dropped off. There was like 20 sets dropped off that day that we had printed them to the town hall.
Right. They're not, they're not here. I don't know if it's possible that they could be emailed to the board right now.
Jeff, do you have the ability? I'm not at my desktop. I'm working remotely from a laptop.
I, I do have the 5-4 plans here. I can, I can pull them up. I I do have the five four plans here. I can um, I can pull them up.
Yeah, and there was one question that we brought up.
Is there a sheet I should uh turn to?
A, one of the upper handicap units and one of the other upper apartments to be handicap accessible. You know, like if we put a chair back in, which we've done before. No, uh, we're not addressing it on it, but uh.
Yeah, that.
Mr. Rockwood, I'm sorry, I don't know. Are you speaking to the board or one of your colleagues? Jeff's brought up the plans.
Are these final plans? Are these final plans?
As long as those retail plans, they meet the size of a handicap bathroom. It looks like they they might uh work. And then um. Residential units have handicap requirements, whether they're handicap accessible, they have to have larger jams and things like that to. Be made to be accessible in the future.
Yeah, yeah.
So Clark, wouldn't we expect to have completed plans with this kind of documentation? Placed on it?
Well, y- yes. Uh, yes, um, it's just that it wasn't in our um. Our online um. Mm hmm. Documents.
And then we would.
Madam Chair, just to be clear, we we dropped off paper copies and we did email electric copies.
Yes, may I interject on this? I apologize, but these are sent to me for the zoning board. Because we'd ever gotten for the zoning board and so I have put them in the zoning board file and. That's why they they say ZBA set. This, there was never said this was for the planning board. So. We just need to be a little more specific and I apologize. I. I got them for zoning. I put them in my zoning files. I've put them for the June first meeting. I thought we were referring to the set plan set that was set on four thirteen that was sent late late. Before the last meeting. Those are the ones I was waiting for that I didn't get that said for, that said planning board. So there's just. A lot of plans going back and forth with different dates. So.
And Madam Chair, I don't want to put this in Ms. Oram's uh lap. I I did confirm that the information was going to be placed in both the planning board. And the zoning board files and was asked to be instructed if there was any additional information that was needed. Because we face this very same problem. And and again, everyone's doing their very best to manage a mountain of information and plans. So I'm not blaming anyone, but. We really tried our very best to provide all of this information and have provided all this information to both the ZBA. And the planning board in a timely fashion. And so we're all doing our best.
And and we all appreciate that. I mean, the the one benefit of uh electronic documentation is. Sometimes it actually turns out to be useful, not always, because it can be so small, you can't read it. Um, so let's continue with the planning board members. Clark, do you have other comments?
Uh, the only other comment is um, there's no third floor plan. It looks like there's almost enough room for a bedroom or like maybe an in-home office. Um, it is, is that occupied space on the on the third floor or is it just storage?
Uh, we were planning for it to just be storage. It does have a set of stairs walking up to it. We'd have our HVAC equipment up there. Uh, weren't pointing on uh finishing it. It would probably be insulated because you'd insulate for the HVAC. Uh, leave it in a hundred and thirty degree attic, but uh. It was, it was just uh attic's attic storage basically for the units.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the, I think those are all the comments I had. It would be uh useful to get an electronic copy of the updated architectural plans.
And and if I may, regarding uh the access, if we need to provide. Uh, for one of the apartments, we could make it the stairwell wide enough to have a lift. And, you know, to accommodate um one of the apartments, you know, to be accessible.
Yeah, I mean.
That's really the only requirement.
I've done a a bunch of larger um, like multifamily projects. This is quite small. And and um, you know, there's a certain percentage of them that have to be fully accessible, a certain percentage of them, you know, that that have to be. M- modifiable to be accessible and um, you know, uh, certain percentage that have to be um. Uh, affordable and and then there's the uh Fair Housing Act, M A A B, ADA, and then the. And then the building code that that applies um under uh the the, not the residential. Could the inside the unit, they're basically fall under residential code, but um, everything that gets you to them. Falls under the kind of main commercial um. Uh, IBC um, two thousand fifteen. Code, so it's, it's sort of a funny, it's a sort of fu- funny code uh animal. Uh, where it's so small. Uh, so I I would say, take a look at the standards and um. And uh. Figure out exactly what the response needs to be um with a specific. Um, code reference. So that um you don't run into problems when you're applying for a billing permit.
Right, we we would review that and have that on a code sheet, on a cover sheet.
That sounds good.
Um, all right, Clark, are you finished?
Yep.
Thank you. Then uh Tom Callahan.
Um, let me just start with a couple of dimensional questions. What's the uh comparison of the footprint of the old building and the new building? What's the numbers?
Um, so the footprint area is listed in the zoning table under building coverage on sheet four.
Um. If I could read it on the small screen, I wouldn't ask the question.
Yeah, the the existing building footprint is three thousand two hundred and ten square feet. And the proposed is three thousand two hundred. So ten square feet smaller.
Okay, and then we we have in our bio our definition.
Right.
Who's it? I don't know where that's come from. Uh, floor area, so you know, so the bulk of the building, what's, what's the difference in the overall size, the bulk? The gross, the gross floor area of the old and the new. If you know. If you don't have a quick answer, that's fine. You can just provide us that.
Yeah, we'll have to get back to you on that.
Yeah, I'm just, I mean, it certainly looks bulkier than the existing building was, the pre-existing, the old buildings, but I'd just like to know that. And one other dimensional thing I noticed for the site plan, are we not meeting the setback in the rear of the building? Um, is that correct? This is our B, isn't it?
Um, we we are complying the uh, both the side and the rear required setbacks are fifteen feet. It's in the residence A district.
This is our A?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, now, my next comment is more about the legal. I ask Adam, with the zoning board, are you looking for relief under eight point eight and eight point nine?
I'm sorry, Mr. Callahan, I can't hear you very clearly.
I'm sorry, are you looking for relief under both eight point eight and eight point nine from the zoning board?
I can read the application. We're looking for. Relief to extend, one moment. Relief under eight point seven, eight point eight, nine point seven H and fourteen point four C five.
Point seven.
So a special permit for expansion by pre-existing non-conforming use under eight point seven. A change in non-conforming use in accordance with eight point eight. Located within the floodplain and watershed protection district governed by nine point seven H. And also, although I don't think we need this relief before because we've reduced impervious, but we were seeking relief. Um, because we were in a water resource district with respect to impervious area, but I believe we now meet that requirement and no longer need that relief.
Okay. Um, all right, you you don't believe you're proceeding under eight point nine?
Um, can you please face your mic?
You don't believe, I'm trying to read and speak at the same time, sorry. Um. You don't believe you need any relief under eight point nine? Not, not that it, I guess it doesn't really matter, it just.
No, sir, because we are not uh restoring that same building. So if we're. If we're unsuccessful in this effort, we're going to reconstruct the building. In the same location, but the point of the exercise is not to do that, to create a better project.
Okay, all right, so. This is my next comment's directed to both Adam and Cindy. Um, I mean, under twelve point six A. It seems that this board has to make some finding related to the non-conforming issues that this project raises. And I I would think we'd want to be in harmony with the zoning board on our conclusions. Um, have you, Adam, submitted any? Legal memo on why you think you comply with all of this? All of these provisions relating to the non-conformities that are at stake?
Yes, we provided a detailed letter to the zoning board of appeals in support of the requested relief and why we're entitled to that relief.
Okay, can can you share that with us or can perhaps Lauren and Jen put put that in our record?
Of course.
And then I'm asking Cindy, have, as our our counsel. Uh, given the zoning board any kind of legal opinion about all the issues relating to the non-conforming nature of this this site? On behalf of the town. Hello? Cindy, are you there?
Sorry, I was muted. I have not done that. Um, I anticipate that. This will be before the ZBA and that will come up.
Okay, yeah, no, I just, it's twelve point six A. S- seems to have us require us to make some findings regarding whether this is extending. A non-conformity and so I just want us to be in the same page on this. Uh, with the zoning board. It would be ideal if we were on the same page. But I would like to see Adam's thoughts on it. So that's, that's my only concern at the moment. Um. You know, it's more on the legal things because we're dealing with a difficult site because it's a non-conforming use, so. I'll look forward to seeing that opinion. Thank you.
Um, all right, thank you. Uh, Tom, Paul Grady?
Uh, no, I have no real comments. I just like to see what uh the ZBA has to say. I agree with Tom, but uh. I'd like to see what their decisions are, but that's about all I have to say about this.
Right, thank you. Eric Potter?
Nothing further to add right now.
All right. Well, what is the uh sentiment of the board regarding this um project? Tom, you're muted.
I I noticed that Mr. Skavvo's hand's been raised to this. I don't know if he wants to say anything and I noticed that Connie Afshar and Abutter. Has at least let us know in the Q and A that she's here. I I didn't see a particular question, but she might want to be heard, so.
Thank you. Um, also, Ms. Ginger Jensen. Um, Mr. Shiao, I don't see, oh, I see. Oh, right, all right.
Ginger wants to, Ginger wants to speak about Wendy Hill later tonight.
I see, okay. Um, so Lauren, can you allow Mr. Shiao to speak, please?
Yes, he's here on panelist. Mr. Shiao, but can you unmute yourself?
Yes, good evening. I was just gonna add um, as far as if there's a major snowstorm. I would be using a snow melter because we would have limited use of uh sand. And there's going to be no salt used at the site, so that would just turn it into plain water. And it would drain the same as rain, so issue with as far as snow storage in a large storm is not an issue. And I think uh Mr. Callahan had a question on the uh original building was seventy five feet long. Fifty two and a half feet wide, uh not including the step out. If you look on the the plot plan. Uh, facing one fifty one. South Main Street, uh that that area of the building was even wider than the fifty two and a half feet. I've had the building for forty years, so I know every inch of the building. So I just wanted to add, add that as well, if that may answer some of the questions. Thank you.
Is it the same height as the original building?
Uh, the original building is actually forty feet at its highest point. Uh, the new building is uh shorter. I would want to say it's uh thirty three and a half feet is what the new building is. And extending to the original chimney was forty four feet.
All right, thank you.
Welcome.
Um. Lo- Lauren, could you uh promote Ms. Afshar?
Um, Ms. Afshar, if you could state your name and address for the record before you begin your comments. Ms. Afshar.
Yes, sorry, sorry. Yes, hello, Madam Chair and Planning Board. So um, we are Connie and Nadia Afshar and we live at one forty one South Main Street. So we are one property removed from uh the Skavvo Garage at one forty seven South Main. And um, I I believe we joined you a couple of weeks ago. And we certainly have been with the ZBA where we expressed our real concern about potential flooding runoff. So that that has already been expressed. Um, what we would like to express today is really a very important and ongoing concern. Um, we have lived here for almost thirty years. Uh, when we bought our house here, we had actually moved from Summer Street and the Budding Street. Um, with no knowledge of any underground pollutants. Um, but as we lived here and as we gardened in the front, particularly in the front of the house. Um, in the winter time, when the air pressure is lower. Uh, there were unmistakable um odors that would come. From that direction and particularly come up through the.
Petroleum based.
Yes. Petroleum based orders that would come up through the grates. You know, along this, along the street.
Outguesst.
And and I think it's common knowledge, as you talk to folks that lived in town for a long time, that there is a lot of concern. Uh, about pollutants that are coming, that emanate from. Either one forty seven or one fifty one South Main Street. Um, we don't pretend to know where they're coming from. But um. Uh, we just want to make sure that. Uh, as the project goes forward, whatever project that may be, that uh whatever underneath. That parcel of land is not simply paved over and built upon. Um, this may not be the correct, the best place to bring this issue forward. Though I did hear, if I understood correctly, just Jeff Hessert said he had been already to Conservation. Um. Commission, I'm I'm not sure if I understood that correctly, but I would like some assurance from the planning board. As to whom will. Um, in the town will oversee and guarantee and make sure that the land underneath. The existing, uh, the prior existing garage is is clear of um ongoing pollutants. Yeah. That that's our, so we have sort of twofold concern. Our our initial concern again was flooding in our backyard, which is a very, very, very viable concern because it happens. And um.
If you told you.
But also concern. A a major concern and the realization that this is the time to address these issues. Um, both at one forty seven and later, perhaps at one fifty one. To make sure that um.
Your environment.
That they're, they're those, those.
Environment is protected.
Yep. So that that that's our major concern. And I did send an email to the. And I did send an email to the ZBA last week. And I wasn't sure, I was kind of under the impression that perhaps emails or letters to the ZBA are shared with the planning board, but I wasn't sure. So I also wanted the opportunity to speak to you this evening.
Thank you. Would any member of the applicant team like to respond?
Madam Chair, this is Adam Brodsky. As I've explained before, there's no evidence of oil or hazardous materials on the site. It was an auto body repair shop, not an automobile garage. There was a release associated with the fire, with low levels of petroleum contamination getting into the soil and the groundwater. That was assessed and remediated by a licensed site professional in conformance with the Massachusetts Contingency Plan, which are the regulations under our Chapter 21E statute. And a permanent solution without conditions achieved for the site, reducing those levels to background. I can't speak to what's may or may not exist on another property. As I've said before, there's no evidence of oil or hazardous material on this site, and we provided you with the documents that relate to those remedial activities.
Thank you. We have another individual who'd like to speak, Mr. John Docray, who's the Assistant Fire Chief, and he has two questions. Can he be promoted, please?
We are working on it, yes.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. John Doc, Assistant Fire Chief, Cohasset Fire Department. Two questions. First of all, it was mentioned earlier about there'd be sprinklers installed in the building. I don't see where the sprinkler room is located on the plans. That's number one. And then number two, I submitted a letter requesting a sweat test analysis report for fire department vehicles to the site, and I haven't received that yet. So those are my two concerns. If they could be addressed, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Jeff Hessert here, the sprinkler room is on the side of the building, facing the side parking lot, center, in the middle of the building. And we have not done that turning analysis, but we'll do so.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, I don't see any further comments from the public. So I'd like to get a sentiment from the planning board about what they'd like to do. There does seem to be some outstanding information that we do not have. And so I'd like to hear, Clark, what your opinion is.
Well, I think we should continue the hearing. Just as a follow-up to the Abutter's concern about, I guess it would be groundwater contamination. Groundwater contamination, the contamination source could be from someone's home, the church across the street, from the other commercial facility next to theirs. And groundwater contamination doesn't respect property lines. It doesn't. So, but in terms of once this applicant starts to excavate his site to put in footings, it may be that someone from the Board of Health needs to be there at just the right time when they're digging, so that if there is groundwater contamination from whatever source on site that gets remediated and complies fully with with any EPA or DEP requirements, if it's found. And it may not be, there may not be groundwater contamination under the site. I just can't, can't say. I don't know if there's been any test borings or wells done on the site. That would be one way to find out if they're, if they exist on this particular site. Again, not knowing where the source of the petroleum smell might be coming from, whether it has anything to do with this site or is from another site. But yeah, I think we should continue the hearing because the board hasn't seen the most current information.
All right, Tom Callahan?
Well, just following up on what Clark just said. So Adam, does the remediation report that you say you submitted to us? And we may have talked about this at the last hearing, but did they specifically also not find any infiltration of material from 151? Or were they just focusing solely on cleaning up from the fire? But they didn't... I mean, it's a relatively small property. I have to assume they might have, if there was migration from 151, they would have seen it. But are they specifically discounting that there's been no migration from 151?
That was not the purpose of the notice of responsibility submitted to DEP. So that hasn't been studied. But again, with all due respect to the board, we're talking about non-planning board issues, just like any other property owner in the town. If during the construction they encounter oil or hazardous material in either the soil or the groundwater, and that triggers a reportable condition, they're going to be legally obligated to report that to the Massachusetts DEP, which has primary jurisdiction over this. And they're subject to the same regulations as anyone else. Again, I know that there are anecdotes, anecdotal statements regarding contamination in the area. All I can provide to you is the actual, you know, data that was collected by STANTEC in connection with the cleanup. And, you know, I'm doing my best to answer questions. We're running a little bit far afield of site plan review under the Cohasset zoning bylaw.
I'm not so sure we are under some...
Tom, we're losing you on...
We have to face the mic.
Some of the findings we have to make, I think, in the to address this. And since the site's gonna be under reconstruction, now would be the time to find it and deal with it if it is an issue.
Yes, and I agree with your last statement. If there's an issue, the owner's gonna have to deal with it. I disagree with your first statement. I believe the only, only reference to pollution with respect to site plan review is with respect to the proposed development not result in undue... The proposed development in use will not result in undue pollution of ground to surface waters. I mean, what you're talking about is, you know, are there historic conditions out there? The property owners are gonna have to deal with those if there are any. We have seen no evidence of that. But the board's focus should be on whether the proposed development is going to create some new source of pollution. And I respectfully suggest that a retail office use and residential use on the second floor is not a use which is going to create a high risk of pollution.
I agree with that.
I know that Ms. Afshar wants to be heard again, so.
Let me first... Yes, go ahead, please. Can you promote Ms.? Ms. Afshar?
If she doesn't have any comments, you want to...
I mean, I see an interest, but I'm gonna move on. And Mr. Scavvo?
Just to add, I've been there 40 years, 40 years since 1982, and I've never seen no flooding at 147 South Main Street. And we've had some pretty historical storms in the last 40 years. And we have a clean bill of health like Mr. Brodsky has stated. There's no known contamination at 147 South Main Street. Other properties in the area, I have, I can't discuss.
All right, thank you. Eric Potter?
Yes, I would just say that we have to continue the meeting. We don't have all the materials and there's social movements to tie up. It'd be my opinion with the pollution, they've done all the testing, remediation, got everything signed off on. So with regards to this site, I think their obligations are satisfied unless, like Attorney Brodsky said, in, you know, digging things out, they discover something new. That's, you know, my opinion on the pollution end of things. And I think we just have to continue the meeting until we, the hearing, until we get all the information we need.
All right. Then can I get a motion from one of the members of the board?
Madam Chair, before we do that, can I just review my to-do list to make sure that I've got a defined list of things that you need? Would that be appropriate?
That would be fine, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. So the first thing I need to do is make sure that you've got the updated set of architecturals, and I'll work with Ms. Lynn to make sure that you get to see those. And so we're not talking about that issue again. Mr. Callahan was looking for comparison, I think, of gross floor area between the old and the new buildings, if I'm correct. You'd like a copy of the zoning board appeal application and letter, which spells out our grounds for relief. I'm gonna base on my quick reading of 12.6A. I don't think it's relevant and requires a finding. I think it relates to the fact that no building permit can be issued until site plan review has been completed. I don't think it requires a specific finding, but I'll defer to Town Council regarding that, but I'll provide you with that information. And we need to provide the turning analysis for Chief Docray. Is there any additional information that you don't have? Because I need to make sure that you've got everything so we can close the public hearing.
So there were many points made about the site plan and the architectural drawings. So if you can just go through the list of items that were discussed, and I think between myself, Lauren, and you, we can figure out what they are so that they're addressed in the next round.
There was a lot of handicap, there was handicap bathrooms and shaft discussion by Clark as well.
Right, but and again, I thought that Mr. Rockwood answered that, but most of that's going to be resolved in the building permit application with the construction drawings. I didn't understand those to be information that the planning board needs for site plan review. And correct me if I'm wrong.
Lauren, Lynn?
I just wanted to address, I was just forwarded the attachments earlier that were the missing documents. So I did just immediately forward those to the board as well as update the website. So those two documents have been updated in the planning board application list. And I'll work with Mr. Brodsky in between now and the continued hearing date to make sure that all the other documents are distributed accordingly.
All right, thank you. I want Jen, and then I want Cindy Amara to comment because Clark and she had a back and forth, and I got a sense that she was gonna be writing something for this case. Jen?
So yes, I wanted to comment on that, but also to, I did go through my email forward to Lauren. It was only to me, and it wasn't referenced to zoning, but I should have picked up on that. But we're gonna work, I wrote Adam Brodsky, and we'll work together, make sure you have everything. In addition, I have been working with Cindy and addressed our June 1st meeting with zoning and requesting to chat with Woody to determine what kind of information she would like to do opinions on. So we are on that, just, and I think it was Tom that was asking, so just wanted to be sure.
Okay, thank you. And when will you be before the CONCOM again?
Next Thursday.
Okay, so we'll look for the results from that.
So Madam Chair, I'm just looking for clarification on what information you want with respect to handicap accessibility? Because again, I thought it was a sort of an in-the-park conversation between architects regarding issues, but I thought that it was really directed towards the building permit and construction issues. You know, for example, you know, whether the stairwell is wide enough for a potential lift. But those are all, those are all building code and accessibility code issues that would be addressed in connection with the building code. Again, we're happy to provide information, but I'm just trying to put a box around what we need to deliver to you.
Thank you. Clark, would you like to respond?
I believe that Mr. Rockwood said that he would update the the code section of his set. And it also makes sense for him to just research what's required under the handicap codes because they have spatial and structural ramifications to what you're planning. You know, the important thing is that the units that have to conform to the handicap code do so since it's new construction. You know, we just want to make sure that you're not spinning wheels and have to come back because something changed.
And just to clarify, Mr. Brew, I mean, the architectural plans that were presented don't have a code chart. I would expect to find that code chart on the construction drawings. We provided a zoning...
Yeah, I understand building permit is an issue, but I'm talking about aspects of the design that would affect what you're showing us in terms of layout and the space in the building. I just think it's important that, that you just do the research and try and get the plans as updated as possible for the board's review.
I'm sorry, Dick, do you have enough information? And forgive me, I'm just trying to be very specific.
Yeah, I mean, I've reached out to Pat Fisher, my associate that works with me on this. And the way we see it at this point, we don't have to provide anything on a three-unit building. I spoke with her just to make sure. But with Mr. Brodsky saying, we will do the code review. And if anything needed to be adjusted, it's all adjusted internally. The building isn't gonna change on the outside. And from what I see based on all my sizing, I wouldn't have to adjust anything based on other projects of this size and scope that I've done. So I mean, that is all the information we would be putting on a... You know, once we get through this hearing, then we would do our permit drawings, and we'd have the whole code review cited based on handicap and everything, about the materials of the building and sprinklers and all that follows after. But I, you know, I don't think it's, needs to be... I don't think the meeting needs to be prolonged to have that information. I don't see anything that would change that can't... I know that my, the bathrooms laid out here were from other drawings, and they're all the right size on the retail and for the upstairs. So, you know, I just don't think it's needed.
But Mr. Brew, would you be satisfied with a letter from Mr. Rockwood just talking to those issues as opposed to a code review?
Well, specifically, I'm talking about in the MAAB, under Section 9, the multiple dwellings. There's Group 1, Group 2A, and Group 2B types of units, and they have design implications. So to the extent that Mr. Rockwood has reviewed the requirements and complied with them as a part of the set, well, you can put it off. But I suggest you do it as quickly as possible.
No, no, I'm just trying to figure what...
An updated set.
Yes, sir.
With any implications to the board.
I'm just looking for the work product. So you want another set of the plans with a note that says it complies? Or can we provide you with a letter that says it complies with the accessibility requirements?
Well, I don't really... I suppose either are possible. But I'd like him to look under Section 9 of the MAAB. What is it, CMR 521? And make sure that what he's doing complies with the requirements.
All right, thank you. Cindy Amara?
The only thing I would want to add to this discussion, to the extent that the information is provided to the planning board, I just think it should be clear that it in no way limits further future review at the building permit stage, so that whatever is provided here cannot be then used to limit a further inquiry or further information required or questions that the building inspector would as a right have regarding issuing a building permit. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. May I get a motion from one of the planning board members?
We need a time and date.
Lauren, you're muted.
Thank you. I would suggest 6:30 PM on June 9th.
I recommend, make a motion to continue the hearing as indicated.
Correct.
Um, all right. Do a, a voice vote. Clark Brewer?
Clark Brewer, aye.
Eric Potter?
Eric Potter, aye.
Paul Grady?
Paul Grady, aye.
Amy Glassmeyer, aye. Tom Callahan?
All right.
All right. Thank you. Let's move on to the next item.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will begin promoting our panelists for this.
All right. The next, uh, public hearing that we will be reopening is, um, Concerns of Cohasset Zoning Bylaws for Combined Village Business District Special Permit and Site Plan Review Application filed by Marvel Properties LLC. Uh, the subject property is One Pleasant Street. Would the members of the applicant team, uh, identify themselves and explain how they're going to uh, present, in what order? And then they will individually interview themselves. Paul Grady?
Chairman Chair, just let me, I just want to let you know, I'll be recusing myself from this, um, part of the hearing before you start.
Okay, Lauren, what's the implication of that?
Um, thank you. Mr. Grady has been recused from this, um, hearing from the start. We have Paul Collieri, who will be sitting as an active member for this hearing. He's not here tonight, but he will be filling out the form and completing the Mullen Rule paperwork so that he's eligible to vote on this hearing. Um, so we will work with Mr. Collieri on that. Um, thank you. And then I just want to note that we have Mr. Attorney DeLisi and the applicant Paul Sheeran here to represent this application, as well as, um, our peer review team from Weston and Sampson, Jim Riordan and Jeff Santa Cruz. And then, uh, Mr. DeLisi, if there's anybody that I missed that should be here to speak to this from the attendees, please let me know.
Okay, great. Um, so, uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, uh, for the record, Jeff DeLisi, Aron Berger DeLisi and Harris, uh, representing the applicant. Um, Lauren, I, I believe that you should be, uh, promoting Andrew Arseneau. Uh, he's with, uh, Van Ass Associates, our traffic engineers.
Here he is.
I believe also Jamie Kelleher from Axum Architects should be promoted as well.
Thank you.
Uh, you're welcome. So that pretty much, uh, is our team. Uh, Andrew, uh, and Jamie. Uh, in addition to them, uh, Jeff Hassett, our site engineer, as you mentioned, and my client, Paul Sheeran Jr., are also on the call. Uh, Amy, just to, um, answer your question, the way I was thinking of doing this was, uh, to give the board a brief overview of where we have, uh, where we're at since the last meeting. And then basically just turn it over to the board. Um, I was assuming that, uh, you would ask, uh, Weston and Sampson for their input and then, uh, we probably just do Q and A from there, um, if that's how you want to handle it.
Um, that seems fine. We have one, um, comment from the DPW that we will want to have read into the record.
Yeah, I'm aware that the DPW has, um, a- as well as, uh, Chief Dockery, uh, submitted, uh, some materials, uh, late, late this afternoon. We haven't had an opportunity, obviously, to go through them in any detail. So we would obviously, at the conclusion of this, at least with respect to those matters, be requesting a continuance.
All right. Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So then let's begin.
Great. So, uh, just a brief overview of the property of One Pleasant Street is in the Village Business District. It is not in a residential zoning district. We're proposing to raise and reconstruct the existing, uh, pre-existing non-conforming building, reorientate it and add about 250 square feet in, in, um, footprint space. Uh, the proposed building would be two and a half stories high, would meet all heights and, uh, other dimensional yard setback requirements. The proposal is a mixed use, uh, with commercial on the first floor and two floors above with seven, uh, residential apartments on each floor, um, for a total of 14 residential apartments. Um, the applicant has voluntarily, um, uh, proposed an amenity to the town, which, uh, exceeds quite a bit the required inclusionary zoning. Uh, and would be, uh, proposing, um, 25% of the rental units to be uh, affordable housing deed restricted, which would allow the town to include all of the units in its affordable housing inventory. The last meeting, uh, well, actually, I just wanted to also mention, under the bylaw, uh, 14 parking spaces are required for this proposed, uh, reconstruction. And we're providing 30 spaces on site. The last meeting was April 14th. Um, since the last meeting, we've revised, uh, some plans on two separate occasions, uh, straddled around a Weston and Sampson review letter at the last meeting. Um, one of the primary takeaways was that the, uh, review was ongoing and needed to be completed. Uh, we're hopeful that, uh, especially with our semittals in response to the most recent letter, that, um, we've kind of achieved that, uh, aspect of, of the review, uh, and it's complete. Uh, notable on the plan changes since the last meeting, um, we've updated and defined the patio area design. Uh, we've determined that the fire lane around the building is not required by the building code. But I understand in the discussion that, uh, perhaps, uh, the fire department, uh, would like access to the rear of the building in order to be able to fight fires on an adjacent property. And that's perfectly acceptable. Um, we've added signage details. We've confirmed, or at least I did some research into the status of the ownership of the MBTA lot. And I did not see any deeds, uh, in, uh, the registry of deeds that would indicate to me that the MBTA, uh, conveyed that, uh, that property to the town. Uh, I was asked to look into that and I provided my analysis there.
Um, just to follow up on that one, I did talk with one of the town engineers and it never got conveyed to the town.
Yeah.
There's, there's some confusion about, um, where the documentation is that the MBTA was supposed to turn it over to the town. But at this point, it never got turned over and the T has no plans to turn it over.
I think you should see them. Um, I, uh, I added, we added some signage details, uh, as I, as I indicated. Um, also, we provided a gate with a manual override at Smith Place, which was something that was discussed and a consensus was achieved uh, at the last meeting on that issue. Uh, the, the gate would also, uh, the plans show that there's sufficient area for pedestrian activity uh, for use by residents around the gate area. Um, we added a rail along the sidewalks. I think Eric, you were interested in that, uh, to ensure pedestrian safety. And we, um, addressed site distance questions and turning radii into and out of the property from Pleasant Street. So, um, with that as the background is kind of the highlights of what we've done and the fact that we've been through some Weston and Sampson review. Also understanding that the most recent semittal from the DPW and, um, Chief Dockery will require us to provide additional information and, uh, confer with those authorities. Um, that's pretty much where we're at. I, I also provided, I believe, a letter was submitted from, um, uh, some residents, uh, with, uh, four specific items that they wanted the board to address. And I've provided my response on behalf of the applicant to the board in writing on that some time ago. So that's pretty much it. Amy, I think you're muted there.
Uh, and so that concludes your update for the applicant.
It does, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Then we'll turn to Weston and Sampson, uh, our peer reviewers for their update.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Chair, um, this chair. I would, uh, like to, uh, make a brief presentation. I'll share my screen to do that. Hopefully you should be able to see that.
Not yet.
You don't see anything yet.
Okay. I'll wait just a moment. Try once more.
There we go.
Okay. Okay. So, uh, this is, this is, uh, I believe our fourth appearance, uh, regarding peer review. Um, we've done a couple in the past, um, on this particular property and, um, had comments um, that have, uh, been addressed to some extent. Um, there are a number that, uh, as of our last peer review, were still outstanding. Um, we received materials, um, from the applicant, uh, just recently. Uh, it was, uh, yesterday as a matter of fact regarding, um, you know, uh, addressing the comments that we had sent previously. We haven't had a chance to review those in detail, of course. Um, but I will make note of them as, as we go through this. Our primary focus tonight are on these four topics, uh, site plan rate layout and public realm. Uh, primarily focused on stormwater, traffic and circulation, uh, architecture and landscape architecture. These are basically the remaining items, um, that are, uh, that are outstanding on our review. This is a list of the materials we've received to date. Um, and you'll see the note at the bottom that indicates the May 11th materials, uh, which have been received but not reviewed at this time, at least not in detail. Um, this does not include, this is not an, an all-inclusive list. There are some materials that were received prior to March 22nd. They were, uh, reviewed under our initial peer review. We're also reviewing, uh, wetlands, and this is being done for the Conservation Commission. Obviously, that's being done separately. Uh, peer review memo was provided on that on April 21st. Just want to make you aware of it. So, um, there are, were still several issues regarding catch basins and drainage piping as well as utilities as of the last peer review. Um, we've, uh, received additional information from the applicant, which, um, we think may address those. We know also the, the DPW has provided comments, um, which, uh, which have to do with, uh, catch basin placement and use as well. Um, so, um, so that'll need to be coordinated. Constructibility at this point, um, we believe all the comments that we had on that are satisfied and we have no further comments at this time on the constructability issue. Traffic and circulation. So fire truck access, um, we have, uh, we've seen the recent review by the fire chief. Um, and, uh, the, um, template that was provided by the applicant recently. Um, there are still some questions regarding that. Uh, dumpster and trash truck template. Um, so, uh, we've recently provided, been provided some information on the dumpster enclosure and trash truck template. Um, and, uh, we're going to take a look at that and see, you know, whether that satisfies our review. Stopping site distance. So there were questions about the planters and the height of some of the, uh, vegetation that was proposed in those, uh, as well as some of these trees that are along the road. Um, we know we've received information from the applicant on the 11th that we think probably will address that. Um, but again, we need to do, uh, review of that, uh, thorough review of that to be certain. Uh, sidewalks. So this review of the proposed, uh, location of the driveway, well, of the MBT track, MBTA tracks, as well as the proposed driveway, uh, layout, which appears to impact the crossing. Um, we've received additional information from the applicant that we're going to take a look at and review. But as of the time of our last review, um, we did still have some questions about that. Uh, driveways, clarifying the ingress and egress on the eastern driveway. I know that the applicant provided additional information on that that we'll take a look at, um, on the 11th. And, uh, then screening of the ground level parking. Um, basically the same arrangement with that and also the ADA parking standards. The applicant has provided additional information, uh, that we need to take a look at. But as of the time of our peer review memo, uh, these had not been addressed. Uh, architecture. Um, we recently received some new information regarding, uh, the ventilation mechanical equipment. The applicant provided, uh, letter, um, uh, addressing comments that we had had in the peer review. We're going to take a look at those. Um, this also included discussion of the building facade modulation, uh, and the electrical vehicle parking station. Uh, my understanding with the parking station is that the applicant, uh, intends to provide, um, one electrical vehicle charging station. Um, this was not a requirement, was just a recommendation suggestion. So I anticipate that that will definitely be, uh, addressed by the new materials. Uh, affordable housing. We understand that the applicant intends to provide deed restricted affordable housing. Um, we'd recommend seeing that in writing. Uh, we haven't seen, uh, applicant materials to that effect yet. Um, we have heard the statement of several times. Uh, sidewalk landscaping. So the main issue here had to do with pruning and, uh, uh, traffic site distance. Um, we understand that the applicant has provided information regarding, um, ongoing maintenance of the vegetation and, um, making sure that the site, you know, the, um, visibility, uh, around, um, the, uh, the site traffic distance will be maintained. Um, so we'll take a look at that, confirm that. Um, this also pertained to the off-street parking, uh, feather reed grass that, uh, had the potential to obstruct traffic site triangle, um, because that reed grass can grow, uh, to, you know, between six and eight feet high uh, in certain instances. So that was being included in some of the, uh, the planters. Um, we'll take a look at the new materials provided by the applicant to see, um, you know, how those are going to be maintained in order to ensure that they do not obstruct site distance. Uh, parking light, light landscaping, lighting and signage. Uh, as far as the signage one, it was really just regarding, uh, the wayfinding signage. Uh, and there is, uh, recommendation in, uh, the town's regulation that that's encouraged. I understand from the applicant that they plan to address that, um, as part of, uh, construction. Um, and, uh, it would be up to the board, of course, whether that's appropriate. Um, we've also received new information regarding the parking lot landscaping and lighting that, um, came in on the 11th and we have yet to review. So we'll take a look at that. Street furniture, street trees, street, uh, tree installation and onsite open space. So these are similar sorts of issues that had to do with the maintenance of the open space, um, in the long term, as well as ensuring that the trees did not grow into, um, into the, uh, obstruct the, the site distance for traffic. Uh, street furniture, the applicant has provided an iron, uh, railing fence around the patio. Um, and, uh, provided that that is acceptable to the town, then that would also be acceptable to us. So next steps would be the, uh, we will discuss the review with town staff. Um, update the memorandum with additional information as requested, um, complete the review. Um, and we would hope, uh, as, uh, Mr. DeLisi had mentioned, that that would finalize the review. Madam Chair, I think you might be muted.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Jim. Um, Lauren, would we like to read any of the documentation that came in from, um, either the fire chief or DPW?
Yes.
Yes, let me pull that up right now. Okay, so first I'll read the statement that came in this afternoon from our Department of Public Works. This was sent to me by Jason Federico on behalf of Jason and Brian Joyce. So there's, there's a series of comments here. First is inflow from paved areas will not be allowed for existing catch basin locations. Great to remain and be outside of the paved area. Also, owner to confirm no snow storage will be done in this area. Note this area and open grate will be subject to flooding surcharges during extreme weather events. This, the catch basin grate must be maintained for airflow and function of culvert system. It cannot be in a paved area so that no direct discharge is allowed in James Brook culvert. All the flow from the entirety of James Brook watershed from the MBTA station, southward along North Main and adjacent collector roads drains through this property within the James Brook culvert. As such, the town infrastructure running through the property are a critical piece of the town stormwater flood control system and are subject to high flows and surcharge flooding conditions during extreme weather. Third is structural appear in, I think this is PE, to review the existing field condition of the James Brook culvert conform structural capacity. Parking shows 29 spots plus two handicap spots. There are 14 units in retail space proposed. There's not enough parking for two car families in commercial use. No overnight parking will be allowed in the town parking lot. Need to accommodate for max parking on site. Five, the gutter down spout to infiltration galleries, some additional comments about that. Six, fire flow tests should be performed at the hydrants to determine adequate flow. Seven, proposed drain connect the existing town culvert. There should be no direct discharge into the culvert from site drainage. Eight, location of proposed hydrant move must be approved by DPW and the fire department. Nine, existing water services to be terminated, that the main and new water services are to be installed. 10, no catch basin connection should be made directly to James Brook culvert. Stormwater should be managed and infiltrated on site. 11, town street lights are being encroached. Questions about the lighting plan, a question about the snow removal plan, stormwater drainage and maintenance plan. And then the last four comments. During construction, please, please provide wheel washing of sweeping plan to avoid debris and sediment onto Pleasant Street. The new curb cut requires police department safety officer review and approval. All sidewalks are to meet ADA approval. And then finally, a comment about the structure proximate to the street and the strike hazard from the street line turning in and out of vehicles. So this comment, as I mentioned, came in late this afternoon. I did forward it to the applicant and our peer reviewers, so this will be taken into consideration. And then we got later John Dockray, Assistant Fire Chief, who was with us earlier. I think he's still here, but I don't have my screen up. Just asking about a swept path analysis to be completed for one Pleasant Street and has a document regarding that request. So those are the two that we had from town staff that came in today.
It appeared that in reading Jason's comments that he probably looked at the plans, but wasn't, probably didn't have, for instance, the stormwater caucks and things of that nature. Is that something that you would provide to him, or should I arrange for that to be provided separately?
So yes, I can speak to that. We do at the beginning, at any sort of time, we have a special permit site plan review application. We do interdepartmental coordination where we send a full application packet out. However, I know this has been a continued hearing. It may be that Jason wasn't looking at the full packet of information, so we'll make sure that that is disseminated again and that they have that information as we lead into the next hearing date. Just noting again that this came in late this afternoon. So I just wanted to get it as soon as we could into the record until all the parties involved, but we will work internally to address that before the next hearing.
Thank you very much. And then one additional comment, just on Weston and Sampson's review. I think it was mentioned that there was no written documentation committing to the affordable housing component, and I'm, I'm positive that I, I submitted that after the first meeting, after we had a meeting, Weston and Sampson, on the day that we had that meeting. So it probably just didn't get pushed over to Weston and Sampson. If you would do that, Lauren, I would appreciate it.
Certainly.
Thank you.
All right, so there's a significant number of additional people sitting here that could speak. Is there anybody else, based on what's been said from the applicant team that would like to make further comments, or should we turn to the planning board? All right, I don't see any signals other than that, so I'll begin with Clark.
Thank you. So I like this project. You know, I generally, I'm, I'm not saying how I'm going to vote, because that would wait until we have everything or everything submitted and thorough reviews. But I would like, I noticed on the architectural plans that you have some condensers at grade in that area between the Green Bush right of way and the building. That's air conditioning equipment. And so it's, it's sitting in that paved area, but the, the engineer's site plans don't show it. So I, I just ask that those, that area and the screening, and you probably need some bollards or something to protect it from vehicles, that that be detailed on the engineered site, site plan as well. And in terms of the curb cuts onto Pleasant Street, I don't know what the requirement is for the ADA tactile strips. I would ask the applicant to check and see if that, they need to add a detail to their site plan for the, the sidewalks where the drive aisle comes in so that a site impaired person can, can tell that they're crossing a part of the sidewalk where there might be vehicles. I noted that there was a comment by the DPW, something about the, the culvert in, that there might be buildings on it. And I did note that there, there is, there are no planned buildings on, on the culvert. But in terms of loading for an oil truck or a water truck or a fire truck, I, I think that whatever the DPW recommends for confirming that this area of the culvert is will handle any anticipated loading. I think that's, that would be generally appropriate. And also the, the DPW's comment about no overnight parking in the town lot. We have a special provision in our, in our bylaw that allows some parking flexibility because of the, the, the proximity to the, the town parking lot. I'm not aware of any prohibition for overnight parking in the town parking lot. Does anyone know of a prohibition? Okay, well then, I know all those comments need to be vetted, and I'm sure the applicant will do an excellent job going back and forth and making sure that any of the reasonable comments by the DPW and Weston and Sampson are taken into account. The, I, I want to also note to the other planning board members that rooftop HVAC units are shown on the architectural plans. And I think the other change was that the, the, the small roof lit area in the, I guess we'll call it the northeast corner, was removed so that trucks won't hit it when they're going by. Those are the only comments I have. Thank you.
There is a comment in the comment area that says, can the public see the plans as they are being discussed so we can follow commentary? I'm not sure if the applicant was planning to show plans tonight. If this is pertaining to this discussion. Lauren?
I, I think the plans are publicly available. We've, we've gone through them now, two hearings prior up on the screen. I think that the public could, Lauren, have you, have you posted those plans on the website?
Yeah, so the active, if, on the Closet Town website, under the government tab, if you go down to Planning Board, Boards and Committees, there's a sidebar tab that says Active Planning Board Applications, and all the plans are available at that website.
Right, we're, I think we're a little bit beyond showing plans at this point. We may show plans in the next iteration. So thank you for your comment. Mr. Dockray, would you like to make a comment?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. The only thing is the letter that I submitted today, late to the planning board, the plane director, mentioned about the swept path analysis that was submitted for our review. Upon reviewing the plan, we noticed that the north end of the building is extremely tight for our ladder truck to ma- make the turn. It shows it, ladder truck hitting the retaining wall on the MBTA side of the property and has a potential of hitting the building also. So we need to have that reviewed independently and go back and look at how that was reviewed, the swept path analysis report that was formed by the applicant. That was a major concern.
We'll provide that information, Chief. And if, if necessary, then we could, we could tweak, make some tweaks to the building to make sure that you have that access.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you.
While you're, while you're here, Amy, you had a comment at the last meeting about the fire trucks being able to access from Smith Place in light of the parking. And I'm just wondering, that is one area that, at least after the, after the meeting, the last meeting, I had, I was a little confused and as I was reviewing my notes on that. I'm just wondering, since the chief is here, it might be something that you could articulate, and he might be able to provide some comments on?
I have to say, I'd have to go back through my rolodex, and it might be a little dusty.
That rolodex?
You know, these ancient things that don't work so well late at night. I really can't comment, but I, I suspect that whatever additional observation that the fire chief would undertake would potentially identify anything that I would have said, so.
That's, that's what I thought as well. If he saw an issue, he would have.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, the, the only question I have is mentioning Smith Place. That's going through another property owner's piece of land, correct?
No.
Oh, the.
There's frontage, there's frontage directly on Smith Place. So what we proposed was a where, where some parking spaces kind of in the area behind where that shed is presently located on the property, if you're familiar with it. And the parking was to be kind of slanted parking. I think it was seven spaces next to one another. And that particular area would be restricted from the public for commercial purposes and would only be dedicated for residential purposes. And what we had planned and discussed with the board at the last meeting was to put a gate in that area in order to make sure that folks didn't use it against kind of the way we're laying it out, so to speak. And so the, the gate system would be accessed by, you know, private individuals that can utilize those spaces for residential purposes, like with a card or something to that effect. So I think that, as I recall, Amy just wanted to make sure that the fire truck would be able to would have sufficient area in the lane.
Okay, exactly.
Navigate from, from or to Smith Place if necessary. And so our engineers and I've, I've already looked at that issue and designed it to make sure that the, that the, that the width was sufficient of the, of the travel lane. But I think Amy might just want you to, to confirm that, that's all.
Okay, I'd have to see the plans, the actual plans.
Do you have it? You want to bring it up right now? You're muted.
Yeah, so what Jeff was referring to is off of Smith Place is a one-way entrance to access these parking spaces that are angled here.
Okay.
And we've added a gate in this location. So it'd be accessed via an electronic key card for, for residents only.
Okay.
Jeff, how, how wide is the travel in there? Can you, are you able to?
Yep, one second, please. 18 feet.
Okay, that's good. The only thing is, we would like to have a card also to access that gate for emergency vehicles too.
I think that's a reasonable request.
Okay, okay, no, that's good, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's continue with the planning board members. Eric Potter.
Project's been going very well. I, I'd like everything that's been submitted and all the changes that have been made. I'm in favor of the project to date. And I'd like to keep, see movement in right direction so we can vote on it soon.
All right, thank you. Tom Callahan.
Thanks. I, I share the concern Clark had that, you know, this last minute thing we got from DPW, you know, just at first glance seemed to raise a lot of serious issues about the culvert, both, you know, with structure and dumping into it. So I hope that gets addressed satisfactorily. Jeff, you had mentioned, I thought in your comments, that you said you had responded to the applicant, to the butter letter that we received. I, I was looking through our materials, and I didn't see a specific response to that letter, but that's something you did?
Yeah, Lauren, I just want to confirm, because I never, I, I usually don't do read receipts on emails. I had, I had sent, I had composed a letter and attached it to an email. It probably just didn't get pushed out to the board.
Yeah, I, I mean, I found your letter where you confirmed that you're going to put in four affordable units. So we do have that. I just didn't see anything specific responding to the butters. And if I recall, one of their comments was about the Pleasant Street side of the building. And I believe they were suggesting a setback of the second floor where the restaurant space would be a completely first floor space, and the second floor would start behind that. I don't know what your thoughts were, if you responded to that, and what would that do to the number of apartments if that was to be a reality?
Thank you for raising that, Tom. I did, I did respond to it briefly. My, my response was that if, if we had to make changes to the roof, we would not be able to accommodate the units. And that would mean that we would have to take a serious look as to whether we could provide the public amenity of the four units. So since our height is fully compliant, since we are in the business district as opposed to the retail, I'm sorry, excuse me, as opposed to the residential district, and since we provide a variety of kind of roof design modulation on the front aspect of the building, it's not something that the applicant is inclined to do, and we won't be revising the plan.
I, I assumed it would have a significant impact, but I just wanted to hear it, so. Okay, I, I had nothing else at this time. I mean, you know, between the Weston and Sampson memo and DPW, there's a lot to respond to before, you know, we're ready to talk about conditions.
If I could just request, and I, I do apologize if I missed it. I did a keyword search from Jeff Delisi's account, and the last letter I have from you is regarding the affordable housing unit. So if there was something else that was meant to be, I don't have a copy available, and it was not sent to the planning board. So I don't recall seeing a comment that addressed the letter that was from the neighborhood. So if you could just resend that to me, then I will distribute it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
That'd be great to see. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. So let me turn now to the public comments. We have two comments by Suzanne Avril. The first is overnight parking is limited on streets and in the town. Lots, I believe, comma, please confirm. And the second is, what about the concerns of the neighborhood access? Access to Cushing and Smith are intricate. Never mind sidewalks unpleasant, question mark.
Can, can they clarify what they mean by that?
You want to?
Are they looking for sidewalks or are they looking for something else?
Lauren, would you like to promote her, please?
Or let me find her in the attendees. I got her, Lauren. Thank you.
Ms. Avril.
Avril, if you could unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record before your comments, please.
Is the camera working?
Yes.
No. No? Camera?
No camera, but we can hear you.
Okay, hi, sorry about that. So, Chris Plex sent a letter on behalf of the neighborhood with our concerns surrounding the neighborhood. And that's what I'm concerned about promoting tonight because, you know, fourteen units coming down Cushing and around Smith Place is a concern. And the sidewalks on Pleasant Street as well as overnight parking. Sorry, did I?
You, you cut out for a minute.
Hi, sorry. Chris Plex sent a, a, a letter to the planning board on behalf of our neighborhood and I am here in support of that because we're on board. And it touches on the whole issues of the sidewalks on Pleasant Street as well as access to Cushing Road and Smith Place, preserving the launch, which is the, you know, the special access place on Smith Place. So, I mean, all those concerns are here and we're in the neighborhood and there are like twenty-two of us who want to know what's going on.
May, may I ask what, what exactly is not being addressed?
Did you not get the letter from Chris Plex because it outlined it specifically?
Yes, we did.
Okay, that's exactly what we're looking for. I'm sorry, do you not understand? He, he's very articulate. He's a smart man.
I am, I'm not suggesting he isn't. I'm just suggesting that, you know, one, one, one historical note is that when the new, with the village zoning was put in in 2007, the, the boundaries of the downtown, the former downtown business district included these properties on the, you know, the other side of the tracks. And at the time, the neighbors on the hillside there objected to the fact that there could be mixed use on this side of the tracks. And we amended the village zoning bylaw to potentially allow for all residential projects on this side of the tracks. And the James Lane project, which was the first one, was done as all residential. I mean, residential is a central component to the mixed use.
Is James Lane residential? Does that have 40B? It doesn't.
No, that James Lane project was built under the village zoning because it was in the village district, as is this property, as is the ice cream store across the street that's being re, going to be redeveloped, as is the parking lot. And, you know, I mean, it's just interesting as, as people change, neighbors change, you know, new people come town, old people leave. We were accommodating what the hillside left wanted in 2007 by allowing for the potential of just a solely residential project on this side of the street. And yet now there's objections to the residential units. But, you know, residential and the, the whole idea of the village zoning and encouraging mixed use is that because of the difficult economic situations are, the village faces in attracting and keeping businesses, the incentive to property ours is that they would have residential space that they could rent, make money on and make their properties viable and keep their properties viable and keep their properties attractive. So, this project is the quintessential example of what the village zoning was designed to do. And this applicant could very well have come in with a solely residential project and we could have twenty-something units here. So, I mean, it's hard to reconcile the history that I was involved in of what we were doing and trying to accommodate the neighborhood then and then have the neighborhood say there's something wrong with this now. That's just difficult. But I'm, I'm still not clear on exactly what about Cushing Road and Smith Place you are asking us to do in respect to this project.
Um, could we have Mr. Plex, Plex read his letter into the record?
Hello, can everyone hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. So, I'll summarize, the letter is a little bit wordy. But I, I think my concern and my neighbor's concern is that the issues that we raised, and it's not a small group of us, it's twenty-one families, are, are not around issues of mixed use or residential only. They're specific to this project and they are what we believe are reasonable requests that are within the planning board's authority to ask of the applicant. So, we did ask that the applicant would be forbidden from allowing easements to other projects that would affect stormwater management, parking, and a variety of other issues. We asked that one pleasant would be allowed no access to Smith Place. That is with particular respect to the launch, which has special needs children there every day. So, traffic there is particularly sensitive. We did ask that the applicant would provide material support for a sidewalk on Pleasant Street, which is already overdue, but the addition of fourteen residential units, which might be as many residential units as we have on Smith Place today, would affect traffic, both vehicle traffic and foot traffic along Pleasant Street. So, we think that's appropriate if the applicant is adding that kind of traffic, for the applicant to add that kind of traffic capacity on Pleasant Street. And then lastly, with respect to building height, Attorney Delisi mentioned that reducing the building's height along Pleasant Street would be, would mean a reduction to the affordable housing units. So, I, I also think it's appropriate to ask Attorney Delisi why the affordable units would be affected by a change in the building height and not the market rate units. Those are the four issues we brought up.
Thank you for your comments. Would any of the planning board members like to address these?
Well, let me ask, let me, the neighbor, right now what's on the table is a limited access to Smith Place. Entry only, not exiting Smith Place with a control gate for residents only and for police and fire to access. Is that objectionable as well?
The preference of the neighborhood would be no access to Smith Place. It's, among my neighbors and I, we don't understand why it's a benefit to the applicant to have that access. If the parking is sufficient, why have any access to Smith Place? And the interest of the neighborhood is, we want to preserve Smith Place and the safety for the launch as it is today. The applicant would still get to put up the building, but we get to preserve the safety of Smith Place and the safety of the launch.
Thank you. And I mean, I, my only comment, if I just understand looking at the footprint of the second floor is if you pushed back the, where it fronts, it's, they're going to lose units. There won't be fourteen units, so. Whether it's specifically just affordable units targeted, I don't think is what they're intending. It's just that fourteen generates a certain requirement of affordable units. And if they lose units, consequently, the number, the percentage and the number of affordable units goes down. But I'm sure, you know, they also have an economic reason why they would pick losing affordables as opposed to market rate units, but.
The town and the planning board have no obligation to optimize the applicant's economics.
I understand that. He's also, they're also offering this double the number of affordable units than they are required to provide. And that is a benefit to the community as a whole.
And there's no.
Given where, given where we are in our forty, you know, our affordable housing count, that is a benefit that can't be overlooked.
I absolutely agree. There's no reason the applicant couldn't offer the same number of affordable units with the change in building height. And instead change the market rate units.
Understood.
So, I, I will say to Chris that I, I did read your letter and I, I, I haven't read Attorney Delisi's response, but your thoughts are part of the record, your, the reasons why you and, and the reasons you have for them as articulated in your letter will be taken into account. We may not act on all or any of what you recommend depending on how the applicant responds. But we have read them and we are, we will consider what, what might make sense with the whole breadth of the project potential benefits and impacts.
Thank you. Our concern was that we didn't hear these issues being discussed. So, that can create the impression that the opinions of these twenty-one families are being ignored. We seek to ensure that is not the case.
We, as a process, would, we would have deliberations that, where the planning board members have discussion. But generally, we're in the, in the mode of taking in information. So, if the neighborhood has any other thoughts that, on the details of the project, we would welcome your submitting them for consideration.
Yeah. And, and I can assure you that your letter was read and I've already very much considered it and still, still considering it, but I appreciate the opportunity to give you here live the opportunity to just articulate some of the points. As far as sidewalks on the rest of Pleasant Street, you know, I don't believe we have any, any capability to force, like that would be called a linkage payment in Boston. We don't have the kind of zoning and rules that Boston has. And so, I don't know that we could force that issue. It would certainly be nice if developers in the area would do something beyond their property boundaries, but I think that unfortunately would only have to be voluntary.
And the, and the area to the west of, of this particular site, you know, past the parking lot, those sidewalks are very inadequate in, in width and construction. But it would probably be, it probably end up being the town trying to figure out how to do something about that. I don't know exactly where the property lines are, whether they're right up against where those fences are. But, but tho- those sidewalks are inadequate, along with many sidewalks in town. But they get so much use, a double stroller doesn't really fit and, you know, I, I'd like to see something happen there.
I mean, to, you know, to the extent we look at sidewalk expansion in town, I don't think I've ever heard the village or Pleasant Street mentioned. But perhaps this, this location can, especially if there is going to be new development, needs to be moved up on the radar as opposed to, you know, Sawyer Street or some other places that seem to get the priority of the sidewalk discussion.
There's a lot of pedestrian traffic along that, along that stretch to Cushing.
All right, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Chair, one last comment. We felt it would be appropriate only because the project would effectively add another Smith Place. So, for the project to make some contribution for the neighborhood to handle the capacity of another Smith Place, we felt would be appropriate.
Thank you very much for your comments. There's another comment in the window, see, and here's the comment from Tricia Cochran. Seems like my question was dismissed and past fire trucks could not take a right onto Smith Place from Cushing. The turn radius did not accommodate. Has this changed or can the fire department weigh in on this? Chief Dockrea, could you comment on that?
Sure. Would have, that have to do an engineer study. I can't speak of not being able to make turns into there right now. I know we've had incidents down there where we responded with apparatus and had no problems. So, unless they do an engineer study or traffic study, I can't say yay or nay right now.
All right, thank you. Eric Potter, let's turn back to the planning board members. Do you have comments? All right. So, at the beginning of the discussion, Mr. Delisi, Delisi commented that would, that he anticipated that we would continue the hearing. So, I think we've gone pretty long on this one and we know we are going to be receiving more information and more analysis is going to be done. We encourage the public to provide any information that you are interested in having to be a part of the deliberations process, which is, we are now dating, we are now collecting information. We will then go into, we will close the hearing and then we'll go into deliberations. At that point, we won't be able to receive information. So, if there's new information you'd like to provide to us, this is the time to do that now before the next hearing. All right, can I get a motion from a planning board member?
We, we need to get a time and date.
I would suggest seven thirty PM on June ninth.
Motion to continue the hearing as indicated.
May I have a second?
Second. Can, can we, can we block off enough time that we might start deliberating?
We'd have to close the hearing to deliberate.
No, I know, but I'm just suggesting that.
But if you wanted to start negotiating conditions, that, that may be the reason that you're thinking.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I don't, I don't know, Lauren, what the.
You want more time?
I don't know what the ninth is looking like, but, you know.
I can address the, the schedule for June ninth. Right now, we've continued one forty-seven South Main to six thirty PM. And we've continued this to seven thirty. We have nothing else. Just so the public knows, it can be difficult to schedule the public hearings because we can, we can only continue to the time. We can start public hearings later than the advertised time, but we can't begin any earlier. So, frequently, you'll see stacking typically thirty minutes between each hearing session because if one gets continued, then we wind up with a hole in our agenda that we can't fill. So, that's what we typically do every thirty minutes, given how tonight's going. That's why I've given an hour.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think if we get anything else for the ninth, if we can try to give this an hour and not schedule anything till eight thirty, that might be a good idea.
Okay, we can, we can.
If, if one forty-seven doesn't need its full hour, we can maybe fill that in with other miscellaneous business that we have, you know.
Okay.
That's just a suggestion.
All right, so I, we asked for, Clark Brewer?
Clark Brewer, aye to the motion.
I, I asked for, actually asked for a second.
You got a second.
I did, okay. Clark Brewer?
I already said aye.
Okay, Eric Potter?
Eric Potter, aye.
Tom Callahan?
Aye.
Amy Glassmire, aye. Looks like that's all of us. And as was stated earlier, Paul Kaleri will review all of the materials that have been discussed tonight. And that will enable him to be able to, to report on, or participate in the decision when we do the next hearing.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, too. All right, here we go on our next public hearing. We have two more public hearings. They're both on properties on Wendy Hill. Public hearing of the Cohasset zoning bylaw for an application for a large home house plan review filed by Ames Capital Partners LLC. The subject property first we will take is for Wendy Hill, otherwise known as Lot Thirty-One. We will have the applicant with us this evening and I would like to have the applicant team identify itself and then give us some. and then give us some sense of uh how the, what the presentation is going to be like for these two hearings, but just address the first one, please.
Madam Chair, if I could just, just for the record, um Mrs. Cindy Amara, our attorney has departed. She was covering one forty seven South Main and one Pleasant Street, and now we're joined by Attorney Karis North, who will be covering us for the rest of the evening. Just wanted to make that clear. And Paul Grady has resumed us.
Am I back on, Madam Chair?
Yes, you are. We can hear you.
Thank you. Now I'll turn it over to the applicant team. Thank you very much.
All right, may I ask who's going to be the sort of impresario for the application team?
Um, good evening, Sean Richard, Eames Capital. Um we're, we're back here with our team. Thanks for having us. Good to see everyone. Uh, we're presenting uh for Windy Hill and uh the modifications that we've made um prior to the last meeting. Uh, we'll kick this off to, to Jeff Hassett to, to go over the uh, the new version of the landscape plan.
Thank you, Sean. I'll, I'll bring it up, the plan to share. All right, Jeff Hassett here, civil engineer with Morse Engineering and um what, to give you a brief summary of the project, um what I'd like to note is lots thirty one, thirty one and thirty two were both created when the other lots were created in Windy Hill. And they're about twenty thousand and thirty thousand square feet in size respectively. And they are buildable lots of record, um which um the applicant did submit a letter from Attorney Rich Henderson summarizing that. Under the current conditions, these lots are primarily lawn um associated with ten Windy Hill Road, which these lots were formerly in common ownership with uh with that house and number ten. Um, the point I want to make is that on Lot Thirty One, there's no further tree removal proposed. And the, the lot, the lot will be landscaped pretty heavily. Um, they're proposing, um shown on this plan, twenty one trees, forty eight bushes and sixty one ground cover plantings. Um, and that's, that's for Lot Thirty One alone. There's additional plantings for Lot Thirty Two. Um, the other note that I want to make is um, this seems to be kind of a misconception that all of the vegetation that exists on Jerusalem Road is going to be removed and all of that ledge is going to be removed. That really is not the case. Um, there's very limited additional clearing to be done. Um, and the only ledge removal should be within the footprint of these, these two houses. Um, on Lot Thirty One, the house will be somewhat elevated to minimize the depth of the basement um to minimize ledge removal. And there are some visible ledge outcrops for the, in that footprint, but then there are also test pits excavated immediately adjacent to them, which got down approximately five feet. Um, so with that information, we estimate the ledge removal to only be about hundred to a hundred and fifty yards. Um, and then lastly, want to note that, that the houses proposed do fully comply with the dimensional zoning requirements. They meet the front yard, side yard, rear yard height requirements. Um, they also meet the building coverage and lot coverage calculations. So uh, thank you.
Excuse me, Jeff?
Yes.
Um, you, you left out the lot width. And I know that was a part of Henderson's uh zoning letter. Uh, but uh according to Henderson's letter, the lots comply with the lot width. That was a, a zoning issue that I brought up at our last meeting.
That's correct. I agree with Henderson on that.
Uh, is that uh the completion of your presentation, Mr. Hassett?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Are there other members of the applicant team that would like to speak?
Um, yes, uh good evening, John Teriyaki, Teriyaki Architectural Design. Uh, I'd like to share my screen to uh talk about some of the additional drawings that we provided based on the board's request. Uh, here's the basement plan for the Lot Thirty One house. Uh, outlining the slab on grade where the garage will be. Uh, two crawl space of foundations under the mudroom piece and then the, the rear wing over here. And then potential full height basement at the center of the house. And if there are any questions about this plan, I'd be happy to elaborate further on that. The other architectural adjustment that was discussed and requested was regarding the third floor dormers on the front. Uh, we reduced the size of those dormers to six feet each. And we also moved them in on the facade so that um they're not as close to the edge. I think that was another comment that was brought up architecturally. Uh, so we did reduce the scale of those front dormers uh facing the, the two streets. And one, another previous change, just as a reminder, was along the back elevation, um as be added um a decorative roof overhang detail to separate the first and second floors to reduce the height of that mass. This is the facade that faces the uh proposed Lot Thirty Two house. And we had reduced the size of the shed dormer and pushed the shed dormer in towards the building as well to further uh help uh reduce the massing of the building. So that's um in essence, the architectural uh comments, the rest of the plans are just, excuse me, the same as before, but I, I'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
Just a comment, um those, those changes are um, I think they're, those are good. Um, and they addressed, uh I think the points that I had made at a previous hearing. So thank you for making those changes.
You're welcome.
Uh, is there any other member of the applicant team that, that would like to make a comment?
I, I believe that's all, that, that's all we have for, for this time.
Um, all right, uh thank you. Uh Clark Brewer?
Yeah, should we get uh uh Henderson to talk about it, the uh eight point three, his letter?
Here.
And the, and that, the lots are, can he just go through his thing and, and, and then I'd like Karis North to uh make a comment on it so we can um have some closure.
Is this regarding a lot, the for Windy Hill or I, I believe the, the zoning questions were for the other project?
The, the, the letter was submitted for, for both um, both projects on, on the, on the issue of eight point three and the lot width.
Okay, sorry about that.
But it, I mean, it probably won't be necessary to go through the letter for separately um
Also
Over again for both projects, but.
I would also say that it, that those, that letter was extremely dense. So if it could be summarized in non-legal.
Look, it was only, it was only two pages, except it was fifty one with sheets with attachments.
Okay.
But the, the, the important stuff is, is right up front in the first two pages.
Yeah, it's good, good stuff. I mean, glad.
Glad you heard, that tickled. Um, Mr. Henderson, would you like to address uh Mr. Brewer's comments?
Just the, you know, the, the cook's tour of your of your, your letter would probably suffice.
I could just clarify. I promoted this Henderson, assuming it was Rich Henderson. I don't or in fact know that that's Rich Henderson. It might be a wrong Henderson, so I apologize if that's the case.
Here.
Um, but I will state that we do have his, his letter in the record. It's been distributed um and that um either way, regardless that the buildability of the lot is actually not before the planning board tonight. That will be something that will come when it's a building permit, it's applied for, and if there's an issue, would go to the zoning board. So that's, I just wanted to state that for
That's fair. Um, if he doesn't, if he can't get on, um then maybe um Karis North could just inform the board as to um the content and her um.
I think the intention was that uh, since we've not had a chance to uh discuss this issue with our council, that uh we would not discuss it uh this evening. Um, because we were anticipating a response from Ms. North and, and uh we were not able to receive it today. So it's probably, it's, it's I think I personally don't really want to discuss it because it's
So we're, we're not in a So you're saying we're, we're, we're not in a position to
That is correct.
Um, have a discussion on the, the zoning analysis by Henderson. And so we'll have to continue the hearings.
That is correct.
It can be explained. I mean, I, I understand his position and what it is, but I don't know if he wants me to do that.
Well, since we were anticipating
I'll be, I'll be reaching out to Rich Henderson. I did speak to him before this call. I imagine he's having some sort of technical difficulty.
Right, but the intent was that the planning board, because we were anticipating comments from Karis North, that we would withhold a discussion of this item um until we had the ability to be briefed by her.
But I'm sorry, could I just step in to clarify? Um the Karis North has been working with our building inspector for a certain series of opinions. Um, John Allen has been working with that. John is prepared to speak to uh the planning board and address those items as they come up, but again, just the buildability of the lot and the zoning analysis, while it's supplemental information to this application, it's not a matter for the planning board to decide. And that is why there, there's been no opinion shared, nothing at this time. And that has been the advice given um through me from the building commissioner to give to you. That is a decision for our building inspector to make, or if for some reason there's a, he, he has an issue with that sort of aspect of this, it would then be directed to the zoning board to handle. It's not something that the planning board can make a decision on.
I agree.
Understood.
But I just want, I just wanted, it wasn't that Karis was due to give the planning board a document that was, that didn't occur. Um, this is just sort of um, it's been discussed as something that our building inspector has been working on, but I just wanted to clarify the roles here.
For the record, I, I think I was just disconnected for a second.
All right, so
Thank you, Rich.
Okay.
Uh, um, with uh your clarification, Lauren, then um if there is no other comments from the uh applicant's team, then I would like to go around and hear the planning board members. So let me begin by asking Tom Callahan.
All right, um relative to the comment about the vegetation, what's, what percentage of the lot area is going to be covered by plantings and vegetation? Do we know?
Yeah, so the, the lot coverage um, which includes the ru- roof areas and the driveway is twenty percent. So the, I guess there's a small walkway, small walkway, a small pervious paper patio. But other than that, the majority of the remaining eighty percent will be vegetated with either lawn or landscaping or remaining um wooded.
Well, w- w- well, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to reference the conditions we wrote on the original decision, so uh, the thought of thirty percent was for wooded or low brush areas. What, what can you ballpark what you're going to have under this proposal? I guess not hardscapes, not driveways, building and not open lawn. Do you know what the percentage will be?
We share my screen. So I, I cannot give you a percentage on that. I can, I can certainly get back to you with it. But I would say th- this area along Jerusalem Road would be planted to meet that intent. This area would remain wooded. And then you have um the area between the lots to, to be vegetated in that nature. So that looks like it could be probably closer to twenty, approaching thirty percent.
Green turf lawn would just be these remaining white areas around the building?
Yeah, the lawn areas are relatively small. You have a small backyard and a side yard.
Okay. And then, and then my other comment, and this will go to the other one too, but I just don't, you know, in light of our prior decision, I just do not see a real accommodation being made on the overall size of the house relative to the neighborhood.
Tom, you gotta face your mic.
Scale, I'm trying to, all right? I'm trying to do two, um, two, two things at once. Uh, the scale of buildings is clearly condition that we can consider. And, you know, I, I know there's the
Hey, Rich.
Uh, Tom, keep going.
Yeah, all right. So I'm just uh I'm just concerned that no real accommodation to that condition has been made in this, and I, I don't know how you want to comment on that.
All right, so you're referring to the original um discussion and the scale of the structure?
Correct, correct. And I understand this, you know, been comments made that concessions have been made and that it's come down ten percent. Well, you know, ten percent of whatever it was, forty nine hundred square feet is not rea-, you know, we're still looking at a building that's forty five, forty six hundred square feet. Uh, and it's still out of scale for the rest of the neighborhood. So I, I just would like to get their comment on that because I don't consider that to be uh, you know, a real concession.
Uh, you, you're looking for a comment regarding, what, what was it? Sorry.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. I knew you were on the phone. I was going to try to wait, but um um, the, the, the scale of the buildings has not really been changed in, in my view.
Right.
In light of our prior condition. And, you know, to represent that, oh, well, we've decreased it by ten percent. Well, ten percent of a large number is still a large, you know, ninety percent of a large number is still a large number, and it's still out of scale with the neighborhood.
Right. I mean, that, I mean, that, I mean, that's, that's, it's an opinion-based theory. I mean
No, it's not an opinion-based theory. It's in our bylaw and, and the numbers don't lie.
Right, but a forty five hundred square foot house along the coast of Jerusalem Road, in my opinion, is not out of scale. It, it, you know, that, I know you guys don't want to factor in that it sits next to a ten thousand square foot structure because it's mixed use, but it's still a structure that's there. And if you drive up Jerusalem Road, the entire length of that road, a majority of those houses are, are well over forty five hundred square feet. And this is a two-story colonial house with, with dormers in the attic. If, if we were to abide by your four thousand square foot conditions, the house would be the same exact size. We just wouldn't finish the attic and, and remove the dormers. We're, we're talking about the same size house. A four thousand square foot house versus a forty five hundred square foot house is not, it's not going to change the footprint. It's not going to change the fact that it's a two-story colonial house. We're just, we're just, you know, not even maximizing the, the lot. We're not, we're not even close to maximizing the lot. We're, we're, we're utilizing the the space that we have the best way we can.
Uh Sean, I also want to respond to Tom's comment in that I think there seems to be an intermixing of the two terms of, in terms of size and scale. And they're really not the same thing. Um, you know, uh, the board keeps bringing up scale, but then is referring to pure square footage numbers. And, you know, a thirty five hundred square foot house could have a massive scale to it. And it's really, scale is more of a design issue. And I think Clark is probably usually thinking along the same lines. And I think that's why we're looking forward to getting the board's comments on design and not just numbers. Um, and we've been really trying hard to get your comments and every comment that we've received, we incorporate. Um, so if you have additional comments about the design of the structure, specifically the roof lines, the heights, the dormers, the slopes, trim, details, um th- those are the things that really define scale.
Well, I, I, maybe, maybe a non-architect, I don't see it quite that way. I see two very large houses much larger than what's around them. And, you know, I, I think it was one of the amateurs, somebody submitted a state of, you know, what's around the area and everything's in, for the most part, is in the three thousand square foot range, some above, some below your yes, your house that was built further up forty foot, uh, four, is that forty five Windy Hill? Yes, that's forty one hundred. Um, but, you know, I we're, I guess we're not going to agree on it. So that's all. I just the representation that some concessions and you may just sort of rankled with me because I don't see it as much of a of a concession to take it from forty nine to forty six or forty five.
I mean, the, the concession, I mean, this is an expensive endeavor, making concessions when we don't have a clear direction on what to do other than make small houses. You know, you view these houses to be compared to houses that are up the neighborhood of Windy Hill. Our position is that we have two waterfront properties. So we're making a comparison based off the waterfront properties in Cohasset. And in this area specifically, and we're amongst the smaller houses in that category. So we feel like, you know, we, we could have gone bigger. But that would have been obnoxious to do to the neighborhood. but that would have been obnoxious to do to the neighborhood. So we, we've scaled these down as, as best we can, and and that's what we got. I mean, they're, they are unique properties. They are waterfront. They do abut Jerusalem Road. And, and in my opinion is that they fit in very well, driving up and down Jerusalem Road. If you put these houses down in the middle of Windy Hill, probably not. But where they're located and, and what they offer, I, I, I don't see anything wrong with these houses.
Um, all right, thank you. Paul Grady?
I have no comments at this time.
All right, thank you. Eric Potter?
Uh, yeah, I would agree with, uh, with what the applicant's saying about the, uh, in, the injection of the planning board here of language um, with regards to square footage into the existing bylaw. I, just to make sure that I wasn't missing something, I took a look at the bylaw again after the last meeting and wanted to make sure that the definition of scale of buildings didn't include language that says square footage. In fact, it, there, in no way does it reference square footage, um, of a building in the current bylaw. Um, and in fact, it says appropriate massing, screening, lighting, building, siding materials, and other architectural techniques, techniques with regards to scale of buildings. It says we also have to take into consideration preservation of landscape, lighting, and circulation. So it has four different items that we should consider in, in, in large home review, and, and none of those items are, are, are with regards to square footage. Then I think this would be expanding the scope of large home review to start including this language. And you could make the argument that the above criteria may be superseded or supplemented by the planning board. Uh, when you look at paragraph number two, but it says, based on previous reviews, decisions and recommendations from a large house plan reviews. And in no, in my history, on, on, as a member of the planning board, we have never discussed square footage or, or limiting an applicant's ability to build something that they would be otherwise permitted to do so on, uh, according to zoning. So I think this is, um, while I'm sympathetic to the citizens in the, in the surrounding neighbors, uh, it, I, unfortunately, I think it's outside the purview of large home review to start putting square footage limitations uh, on our, as an additional condition or a condition, uh, uh, that we approve these large home reviews for because nowhere in the bylaw does it say that that's one of the conditions or fa- of factors that we should take into consideration. And in fact, the, the applicant has had, made some concessions with reduction of square footage, even though they weren't required to, and has made some scaling, um, accommodations to try to accommodate as best they can um, the, the surrounding neighbors and abutters, uh, it, it, with this regards to the new applications. So I would say that scale has been approved, um, if, if you're looking at that as one of the factors to consider.
I would just respond to that, that I'm sitting here looking at the Merriam-Webster dictionary definition of scale. There's many different, you know, the word scale has a lot of uses. I, you know, that's, that's the term our bylaw uses, and you know, just the common sense understanding that scale relates to size, so size is square footage.
No, it's not. No, it's not. Square footage is a scale. The scale of a house, if you have a, if you have a, a split level ranch, that's 4,500 square feet, and you have a colonial that's 4,500 square feet, the scale of those two buildings is gonna be significantly different. So to just assume that scale equals square footage is again expanding upon, i- i- it would, in my opinion, have to be laid out under the definition of scale of buildings, and it's almost, you know, it's almost intentionally omitted. I don't know if it's intentionally or unintentionally, but it's, nowhere in there is that one of the considerations.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna argue the dictionary definition of the common sense, plain meaning of it. We've all made our points. Let's just move on.
If I, if I may inject, if I may inject, the, the Massachusetts Appeals Court has defined the term and distinguished between square footage and other design elements, and it, it, those Massachusetts uh, Mass Appeals Court in the 81 Spooner Street decision said that a direct regulation of square footage of a single-family residence is prohibited under the Massachusetts zoning act, whereas regulation of other el- design elements such as massing and things of that nature that might have an indirect impact on square footage can be permitted, and that is precisely the reason why, uh, the good point that Eric Potter made. There is no, there is no space direct square footage provision in the bylaw because such a provision would be void under Massachusetts zoning laws.
Um, so I'd like to make a comment, which is, I, I would think that, um, uh, certainly architects, and I think regular people would know, that site and situation are really distinct points and important in a context. And my view is, this particular situation does not handle well the design of the buildings as such. It would be one thing if these houses were low-lying rather than standing up off of the surface of the landscape. But they're not low-lying, so they have a feeling of overbearing, looming oh, on, on two relatively small lots. And if there's any sense of why they're out of scale, it's because of the site and the situation. If this was a flat piece of land, it would be a different situation. But it's not, and, and this same type of development is taking place in many parts of Cohasset where there are ledge protuberances and people are putting things above them which have them sticking out completely away from the rest of the landscape. So my view in finding this doesn't fit is because of the site and the situation. The house is going to be on an ups, up lift, and it's going to be essentially hanging over the street. And, and the second half, and so, so my view is that using those concepts of sites and situation, this could be made differently, more low-lying, less, uh, of height. And, and that would have a significant impact on how it would feel in the neighborhood. The houses in the neighborhood are simply of a different scale. Eric?
With all due respect, Amy, have you driven down Jerusalem Road or Atlantic, Atlantic anytime recently?
I live off of Jerusalem Road.
Right, so when I say that, I mean that, like you said, what, like, when I say that, I, I, I say tongue-in-cheek because, you know, I, I, the houses there are enormous, and I don't particularly like that, you know, when I walk around the area that I can't see the water. I mean, I, but there's a forum for these sorts of things. And I would say that this has now become a, the, this applicant is being prejudiced almost i- 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 in my opinion, by, by the planning board because we've had so many applications like this in similar areas. Like he says, if this was back in the Windy Hill neighborhood, it's kind of, you know, a different story, but this is on Jerusalem Road, and if you see the megastructures that have been put up to, to, that I don't believe in, I mean, it's, it's not a crazy 7,500 square foot house or, or 5, 5,500 square foot house. It is on Jerusalem Road, and houses that hang over Jerusalem Road, unfortunately, are, are, are this size.
Eric, there's two sides to Jerusalem Road. Uh, uh, and Forest Ave cuts it. And on the east side, the houses are very large, and they've been that way from the beginning. On the west side of Jerusalem Road, the houses are far smaller. So we're not talking about the same landscape. We're talking about a completely different socioeconomic status. So if the, if the architects were really interested in doing something that fit into the situation and matched the site, I wouldn't have any concern about it. But the same process of large-scale, large mass that's being built on the eastern side has now moved over to the western side. And, and it really is quite distinct from what the total po- total population of housing, houses look like. They're not the same. There's two sides. All right, planning board members, are there other comments?
Uh, if I could just respond to the comment about looming over the intersection, uh, Jeff, if you could stop sharing your screen, I'd like to share a study that we've done. This is a fairly accurate 3D model placing the massing of this house on the intersection. And as you see, the way, and this is something that we've been trying to explain from day one, is that the rotation of the building mass and the hierarchy of the building mass and the front porch and the dormers and the drop roof lines for the two wings, these are all our efforts in trying to get the mass of this building conform to some extent with Windy Hill. It's not gonna conform exactly. Uh, but I don't think it's out, as out of place as some of the discussion makes it sound. You look at two-dimensional architectural drawings, black and white, and the house seems really flat, and you don't get a sense of some of these ins and outs and plane changes and depths and shadow lines that we've been trying to create. Um, so I, I'm, I'm just sharing this to help address that and possibly ease your concerns about the design amassing of this house.
Is that an exact, is that an exact slope?
It's an approximation.
I mean, I walk by that almost every day, so I can say that it feels that it's not the same slope. So, I mean, this is, these are, they're clearly.
That is a picture of the actual site.
That's correct.
That is the actual slope.
And, and the level of the house, um, you can refer to Jeff's plan. It's at elevation 24, which is the first floor where my cursor is. And the street grade, I believe, is about elevation 12, so there's about a 12-foot vertical difference. Uh, the driveway here, again, the intent was to match Windy Hill as closely as possible uh, so that the garage is dropped to the level that it is in the design. And there's a fairly significant stairway to transition back to the first floor. Uh, again, these are all some of the strategies and design elements that are happening in the background. Uh, that may not be as apparent, but I just wanted to share it with the board.
Thank you for that.
If I could add to that, they, they are proposing to take a cut in the, in the backyard in order to be able to construct the house lower to the ground. So there'll be an excavation behind the house.
There, there's another transitional, there's another transition element of, of a stone wall midway between the street and the house uh, that's not shown in, in this, uh, particular rendering. But that's another element that, uh, helps to transition the slope.
So I think with no more, uh, comments from the planning board, uh, let's open it up to the public. Lauren, would you mind, um, promoting individuals?
Yes, um, just for everybody, um, as we take turns, if you could just please be reminded to state your name and address for the record, uh, before you address the board. I'm first gonna promote Thomas Carroll.
Lauren, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my name is Thomas Carroll. I live at 1 Windy Hill Road, uh, Cohasset, directly across the street from the properties that the applicant proposes to develop. I've written a letter to the planning board yesterday, signed by 16 members of the neighborhood, mostly at Butters. Um, and, uh, we feel very strongly that these houses are out of scale with the neighborhood. We disagree with the applicant in saying that the comparable should be houses on Jerusalem Road for the reasons that Chairman Glassmeyer has mentioned. Um, and, uh, feel that there, that these buildings will dwarf, uh, neighboring structures. I'm just gonna read a few comments from the letter that I sent. The size and design verticality of the proposed structures will dwarf nearby houses on Windy Hill Road, and their visual dominance will be compounded by two factors. Their situation on a hillside and the fact that two massive buildings would be built one behind the other. If these plans proceed as the applicant proposes, the character of the Windy Hill neighborhood, which is about 70 years old, will be irrevocably changed and not in a way that the great majority of the Butters approve of. The building, um, proposed on Lot 31 calls for a structure with an RGFA of 4,648 square feet, notwithstanding the planning board's condition of a 4,000 RGFA. However, we feel that, uh, this figure significantly understates the mass and scale of these buildings uh, for two reasons. First, it excludes unfinished space of what we estimate to be 325 square feet on the third floor of the proposed building, uh, which the applicant refers to as the attic floor. This is a three-story building, uh, full style. And second, and more importantly, it excludes substantial square footage of a large basement with nine-foot ceilings. We understand perfectly well that unfinished space and basement space is not included in the RGFA, but that's not the key point. The key point is that the inclusion of these spaces will cause the structure to visually present as being closer to 55, 6,000 square feet in a neighborhood where the average square footage is just over half that number. Um, at the planning, uh, board's most recent large home review of these properties stated April 14th, the representative, the applicant, represented that the neighbors in the Windy Hill neighborhood loved Eames's first completed structure at 14 Windy Hill Road. We have no idea what evidence the applicant has to support this statement, but I can verify the following. Residents of number 1, 15, 19, 18, and 22 Windy Hill Road, all of Butters, the 14 Windy Hill Road, and all signers of the letter that I mentioned uniformly reject the applicant's contention. There is a firm consensus among these neighbors and abutters that the building built by Eames on 14 Windy Hill is too large and out of scale to surrounding properties. We ask the planning board to take the legitimate concerns of the Windy Hill neighborhood and other concerned citizens of Cohasset fully into account when deciding on the applicant's proposals. In particular, we urge the board to sustain the conditions that it has already established and which Eames has ignored and to remain faithful to the large home reviews permit to consider scale of buildings in particular. Both construction will be reviewed in relation to scale and other structures in its vicinity through appropriate massing, screening, lighting, building, and siding materials and other architectural. We just feel that these buildings are too large for the neighborhood, irrespective of Mr. Richard's intention that they should be compared to mansions on Jerusalem Road.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll.
Thank you, Chair.
Would you promote the next person, Lauren?
Thank you, yes. Ginger Jensen? Virginia Jensen?
Thank you for, uh, hearing, for allowing me to speak. I, I really appreciate, uh, hearing Tom's letter. Massing refers to a building's size and shape. Uh, it includes the building's height, scale, and depth. Uh, when you showed the site, the picture of the, uh, uh, it was on the left bottom of one of your drawings, there was a three-story progression in, in, in that picture. Um, the other houses in this area, mine included, on Jerusalem Road are two stories. Uh, we have 2,400 square feet. We are number 542 Jerusalem Road. This, uh, building is, uh, very long, and it looks like a hotel to me. Um, it, but it's, it also is quite high, uh, because of the nine-foot ceilings that are in the basement because of the, uh, dormers that you have on there. And, uh, the nine-foot, I, I, I'm not sure. I, I did have a question because you said five-foot would, five-foot would be, uh, taken out, uh, and I guess what I thought before was that it was a nine-foot ceiling with six foot above and four foot below. Did that change? Uh, maybe you can answer that after I'm done. But I guess more, uh, importantly, it's, it's just the, uh, the way that it is structured with two houses in the same area, uh, it appears to really, um, overwhelm what is currently here. And there is a very, very, with the, uh, what are, uh, the planning committee's chairperson mentioned, Amy Glassmeyer, um, Chairman Glassmeyer mentioned, uh, the difference between the Gold Coast part of Jerusalem Road and the part from Forest West Corner is. the Gold Coast part of Jerusalem Road and the part from Forest West Corner is huge. This is more of a neighborhood around Straits Pond where there's a lot of wildlife, where there's pretty simple, pretty simple living compared to from forest on down to town. And I think that needs to be taken into account when we look at the characteristics and the tenor of the neighborhood here. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Lauren, will you promote the next person?
Yes, next we will hear from Kathy Barrigan.
Sorry. Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board for hearing me. I had a question about the landscape plan. Maybe Jeff Tassit, could you answer for me, please? If that's okay. Is it possible for you to pull up the landscape plan again?
I can, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. And could you please just blow it up a little bit bigger, please? Great. And just so I can see the top part, like the Lot 32. A little more? Sorry. Perfect, thank you. So my question is this. First of all, I noticed that you added some more trees on the, on the border of our property on the, on the west side, and we appreciate that, and we want to thank you for that, first of all. My question is about the red area that you have marked off. I'm assuming that red area means the, that is vegetation to be removed. Is that correct?
That is correct. So that's, and those areas are about 2,000 square feet combined.
Okay. So, and then the green area that's striped, it's hard to see the stripes, but when I looked at the original plan, I could see it, represents the vegetation that's already there, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So Jeff, when you go out there, well, let me just say this. The, the red area goes right up against the, the pool. It actually overlaps it a little bit. So when I walk out to that area and I walk in that corner there, it, the land is already, the land is already cleared right up to the edge of the cliff. And I think the stakes that you have there designate the pool area. So I'm wondering if, like, I don't see what more there is you would clear that's already, hasn't already been cleared.
We-
After the pool, because there's nothing there until you walk up to the edge of the cliff, and then you're standing there, and there were the cedar trees, and then the cliff, the cliff goes down. So I'm asking, what is there in that red area? And for one, and two, the green area that you have there, is that, does that designate the area from the trees and then over the cliff and down to Jerusalem Road?
Yeah, so beginning on Jerusalem Road, the, the edge of the pavement is here. The lot line begins here.
Right.
And then this area is currently wooded, the area that's both green and red. And this, yeah, the two red areas, you're correct, are the areas where there is, will be some woods removal of about 2,000 square feet. In those areas, it's primarily smaller trees. There aren't any trees bigger than 12-inch diameter. It's primarily saplings and undergrowth. What we have staked in the field is the limit of work. Not shown on this plan because it's the, just a landscaping plan, but we show an erosion control barrier that's going to delineate that limit of work.
Right.
And that is what we've staked in the field. We've also staked the building corners. I do not believe we've staked out the pool, though. So I think you may be confused with some, some other survey markings.
So if that is the case, if those stakes are at the corner of the house and not at the pool, that's still pretty close to the, to the edge of the cliff where the, where the trees are. So I'm just, like, I don't see what else you'd take out. If you, I mean, if you put the pool in there, if you add the pool, you're talking about another, what? The pool's 15, 14 feet wide? And then that paver patio is another, I can't see it, but another 14 or something?
No, the pool, the pool is 14 feet here. It basically touches the edge of the existing tree line. And there's no, really essentially no patio beyond there. Looks like it's probably about two feet wide, probably. And then beyond that, the vegetation is being removed for some grading.
Okay, so, so let me say this. If that pool were there, I know the property, if that pool were put in there, that pool would go right up to and into the cedars. Is that correct? It would take up that space?
I'm not aware if there are cedars in that location. I-
There are.
I thought the cedars were, let me get back to my screen.
They're at, the cedars are right along the, at the top of the cliff.
Yeah, I thought the cedars were in this area here.
Well, they're-
There might be other ones over here, but I'm-
They are. They line it up at the top, right opposite where the pool would be. So what I'm getting at is, because I don't, it just, I mean, it's, it's empty. It's all the, all the greenery is down until you get to the, the edge of that cliff. And on that edge of that cliff, there start the cedars, and then it goes down and the cliff goes down. So what I'm asking is, how much are you clearing out? Because I don't see anything on the flat lawn to be cleared out. It looks already cleared out. All I can see is that you would clear out, starting with the cedar trees that are on the cliff and going down.
It's about 20 feet beyond the existing tree line to the stakes that are in the ground.
You would clear 20 feet beyond the existing tree line? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
So-
Approximately, the stakes are the exact moment.
So the, the tree line is right at the top of the cliff. It's right at the edge of the cliff with those cedars. So then you would be cutting the cedar trees and those, and then 20 feet in, right? I'm not even sure. And 20 feet in, you start to go down before you even probably reach 20 feet. So you're going to be taking trees down on the top of the cliff and then over the cliff, right? If you go 20 feet, that's where you're starting?
Yeah, the grade does fall off about four feet in that 20-foot section.
So you'd be clearing the trees on the top of the cliff?
Yes, only on the top.
But that takes down all the, all the trees, and then it becomes bare, like the bottom part. And you would have to still take them off the cliff itself. It's not just, is, does the property extend over the cliff and down to Jerusalem Road?
Yes. But, but this area on Jerusalem Road is not being disturbed, other than this area in red that we're talking about. There's no, there's no access from Jerusalem Road. The driveway in the construction access comes off of the existing driveway servicing Number 10 Windy Hill. Over Neesman.
I, I realize that. I'm just, what I'm getting at is that whether or not you would be clearing off that line of trees that are at the top, that, that were there from the corner of Wendy and Jerusalem down by Lot 31 that went across, went along that whole cliff. Half of them have already been taken off, and I'm hoping that you weren't going to take off the rest of them because that's just part of the whole ambiance of the, that area.
Yeah. Well, there certainly is that small area of additional trees that need to be cleared for the grading associated with the pool in the backyard. But going back to the landscaping plan, there's numerous proposed trees and bushes that are going in to, to increase the vegetation on the site in the proposed conditions.
I know, I know. Jeff, I just want to say, it's not about having a certain number of trees or bushes on the property. It's about disturbing the trees and the beauty that's already there, that's been there, that's been growing for years. It's not about, oh, if you cut it down, we'll put another bush in and it will be the same. It's not the same. You're, when you strip these trees and of this cliff that overlooks the pond, it takes the whole, it changes the whole thing, and, and most of us feel not for the better. And that's really one of the main issues here. It's not just the scale of the houses. It's, it's, it's the whole surrounding that's being taken apart and destroyed.
I think the only thing I'd like to add is that, I mean, there are very few single-family home projects, never mind two of them, that combined only require the removal of 2,000 square feet of wooded areas. I think this is pretty minimal compared to other projects.
So I think, I think what we'd like to do is so we can make sure we have given everybody who wants, wishes to speak the opportunity. Thank you, Mrs. Barrigan.
Excuse me, I have, I actually have a comment to make, if I may. So it seems like we're discussing Lot 32. We have an open hearing on Lot 31. Is that correct?
That is correct.
I guess it's good to get that out of the way, but we should be discussing Lot 31 right now.
Right. We have a little bit of an intersection between the two, but let me-
Well, they're two independent projects. They're not, they're not-
Hey, Andrew, the planning board understands that, but public comments are the public comments now.
Well, I think that was more suited for Lot 32.
You just have to be a little indulgent in understanding that public comments are the public comments.
No, I understand.
We, the planning board understands that they're two separate projects.
Thank you.
Right, thank you. Lauren, is there another person to promote?
Yes, we do have one, one additional, Amy Bernicker. I'm going to promote her in a moment. Jeff, if you could just turn your screen chair off for now, that would be appreciated. Thank you. And then just a reminder again, name and address for the record for all. And then again, just as sort of typical meeting protocol, if, if comments could be addressed to the chair, we are typically not supposed to have back and forth between members of the public and applicants and whatnot. It should come through the chair. I'm just looking for, oh, here we are. Sorry, there's a lot of attendees. Amy should be joining us in a moment.
Hello, this is Amy. I didn't really want to speak. I just wanted you to read my comments that I wrote into the question and answer. If you could do that, please.
All right, thank you. Lauren, should I read them?
Sure.
All right, they address both Lot 31 and 32. Lot 31 and 32 were approved with conditions. I asked that Eames follow the planning board's conditions. That, number two, no exposed ledge facing Jerusalem Road or Windy Hill Road shall be removed, chipped, or otherwise disturbed from existing conditions as of 2/24/21. Number three, no for the removal of existing trees and undergrowth exceeding two inches in height shall occur except within the footprint of the house and the stormwater drainage structure. According to the landscaping plan for Lot 32, there is an approximate 35 by 14 swimming pool shown. Will any exposed ledge be removed to create that pool? And on the same plan, there's a large area of tree canopy shown in red that appears to indicate that it will be removed. This appears to be in violation of condition three. Further, according to the Cohasset zoning bylaw, Section 300-54, Large House Plan Review E Procedure, it states, "Any building, reconstruction, or expansion shall conform with any conditions in the statement of approval." It says, "See next entry." I, I think you mean then to go, I think, I asked that the planning board at Eames discuss these issues. All right, thank you. One last comment, that, that image does not reflect the elevation. I'm not sure if that applies to the three-dimensional model or the actual physical plan. Lauren, is that the completion of the public comments?
It does appear to be so. There's no further question and answers, and there's nobody signaling to speak at this time. So I'll turn it back to the board to proceed, and just again, a reminder that we do have another, the, the second application, as indicated earlier, that we'll have to recontinue and go through the same process here.
All right. So I want to do a last round around the planning board members, and then I'll ask for a motion. Clark Brewer?
Yeah, on, on this project, I'm, you know, kind of, I'm torn in two directions. I mean, if, if there was one 5,000-square-foot hu, house on this very dramatic sloping site, it probably wouldn't be a problem having, you know, over, over 40,000 square feet of land. But that's not what's being proposed here. And, you know, if you had a 3,000 or 3,500 square foot, under 3,500 square foot, so you weren't even coming here to begin with, you know, maybe that has a better fit. I think the applicant has made an effort to deal with transitioning the grade and in the architecture and landscape, try to mitigate the, the issues. But the, the fact remains, these are two separate lots. And while we've been given an opinion by the applicant's attorney about their conformance under 8.3 as buildable lots, again, I'm, I'm torn. I think the applicant has made the best, his team has made the best that they can, but they still want to build on both lots. In terms of the project that we're looking at, I feel like they've mitigated with an updated, very detailed vegetation plan and the architecture to some extent. I, I, I feel like it, you know, as a, as an architect, you don't necessarily get everything you want out of a design solution. I think the real question is, did they respond to scale? Did they respond to the lighting and the, are, are they significantly under their building coverage and lot coverage? And the answer is yes on those points. But I'm, I'm happy to kick it around with the other board members and see what they say.
All right, thank you. Eric Potter?
So I mean, I, I have to say that Thomas's, Thomas Carroll, Virginia Jensen, Kathy Barrigan, Amy Bernicker's comments don't go missed by me, and it, it, it really pulls at my strings as well and pulls me in two different directions because, you know, the class citizen in me is sympathetic to their concerns and, and, and doesn't disagree with wanting to, you know, preserve the neighborhoods here in Cohasset from, from being, you know, all large homes, especially considering in the area town that I live in as well. So I, I'm very sympathetic to that, and, but I'm in a position where I also have to apply Large Home Review bylaw in the way that I think is fair according to prior decisions that we've made and without prejudice to the current applicants. And as a result of that, I, I find it difficult to put square footage limitation on this, as a condition of approval. That being the case, I, I am very much open to the, the conditions that would, were stated in Amy's chats, Amy Bernicker's chat, and, and, and the, the concerns raised by Kathy Barrigan. And I'm also open to discussion with regards to scaling if, if, if there's ability to, to change that that's outside, you know, the- ability to, to change that that's outside, you know, the purview of my expertise, but I, I, I would not be necessarily on board with the square footage limitations for the reasons that I stated in the past, because I do believe it's outside large home review jurisdiction. And I don't think it would be fair to, to put that as a, as a condition on our approval. And large home review does, in my opinion, not allow us to really deny an application that is otherwise conforming with zoning bylaws. So, you know, that would be where I'd stand with, with regards to this application in front of us.
Thank you, Eric.
Here, we, we don't get to deny, though. We, we
I know that, that's why, right.
Conditions.
That's right, that's why. I mean, with, I mean, that's why I'm not in a position to deny. So, you know, and I'm not, and I'm not, I'm also not, in my opinion, in a position to approve. I, I would not be able to approve with the condition limiting square footage. You know, where I would be willing to, you know, work with the other planning board members on, it would be an approval with conditions regarding, you know, the, the items with, you know, tree and ledge removal, so that the landscape can be preserved as much as possible in, in also, you know, as a way and, and maybe that, that, that this could all work out.
Thank you for that. Tom Callahan?
I really don't know what to say because I'm conflicted, but you know, I want to say to the abutters, I think there's been a lot of misconceptions of what we could do with this bylaw to, to influence this project. I tried to warn people that today on 143 or whatever commentary was going around. This, this case is just pointing out all the problems with large home review. It's, it's pointing out, you know, and I'm enough, smart enough lawyer to know what I can do and I can't do. And, you know, we wrote criteria in this. We set conditions. I think we still can set conditions. I don't know how I'm going to vote. I know we can't deny the project. But, you know, it's just, I, I'm frustrated because part of this issue, the clearing part of it could have been dealt with four years ago. We fell six votes short. Town meeting is going to be, again, by a drive-through, which I think is going to cut down numbers, but people have to go to town meeting and, you know, step one of changing how we deal with development that's going on in Cohasset right now is going to be in two weeks. Step two, step three are coming in the next couple of town meetings. You know, in the zoning working group, we're addressing the issue of size of houses. We can regulate by square footage. Maybe not through this large home bylaw, but we are looking at it in, in looking at the dimensional regulations. And I can only promise everybody that I'm working to make the change happen that I've been working for, for 20 years. You know, but I, I know the limits, so, you know, I have to go by the law. Know what the limits of the law are. This particular bylaw is not too I, again, I think we can set conditions and we can push the envelope a bit, but this is just going to redouble my efforts to work on the parts of the bylaw we should be changing. The single lot exemption that this project, this site 32 was brought up is another one, and we're looking at it on the zoning working group. I, you know, I don't think it's, it's bad for me to tip off everybody what we're looking at, but we're looking at a lot of comprehensive changes to the bylaw because there are some of us in town government who see a trend. The majority of peoples that I hear from seem to be against the trend of the mega-large houses. Our population is going up significantly in the last 20 years. So is this average size of our houses in the last 20 years. I know from comments online today, you know, some people say, oh, they, they should be able to do what they want. Well, the idea that people have an unfettered right to do whatever they want on a piece of property is just not the state of the law and hasn't been for centuries and certainly hasn't been since we've had zoning codes and land use codes. So we, we have the right to regulate. This isn't the right tool to regulate. I appreciate that, but I, you know, to the extent we can do something with this bylaw, I think we should, but I'm sitting here very frustrated, very conflicted. But, you know, we'll, we'll we'll take our vote and, you know, I'll decide what I'm going to do at the time, but I, you know, there's going to be a house built, or two houses built, and there's nothing we can do about that. That, that's really all I have to say right now. And I just urge the citizens of the town to get involved and show up at town meeting. Zoning changes require two-thirds votes. It's not easy to get. The land clearing fell six votes short, got a majority, fell six votes short of the two-thirds four years ago. That would have made a monumental change on this project. Wouldn't have stopped houses being built, but would have made a monumental change.
Do you have any specific comments on the?
Clark, I'm, I'm expressing my views. I'm allowed to express it, okay? All right, I'm done.
I wondered if you had specific comments on the, the, the details of the application.
I still think the house is out of scale. That's my comment.
All right, thank you. I still abide by the original decision that was made on the basis of site and situation. And that's my view. So I'd like to, we're, we now need to move on to a, a decision here. So would somebody like to formulate a point of view?
Is Grady still on?
I don't see him.
Lauren, do you know what happened to Grady?
He has appeared in the attendees section. I'll re-promote him.
Thanks. Because we would, we, we want to make sure that if he has any specific comments that we hear him.
All right. Sorry, Paul, you disappeared.
Yes, someone put me out of the meeting, so that's fine.
You don't mind if I call you Grady, do you?
If only if I can call you Brewer. How's that?
You can, anytime.
I look forward to it. So you want to comment for me?
Please.
I'm in complete sympathy with the abutters. We'll stand by that. We have to abide by, I guess, the rules we have to abide by. I don't see a lot of changes in what the developers have done, but that's their prerogative. They own the land. It wouldn't be something I'd do. Those are going to make friends in town. But we have to go by it. So I think they're going to get their houses. But I do, my heart goes out to the abutters and I can only say that. But they're going to do what they're going to do.
I think it is important for me to say at this point, whatever our decision is, this case should be reviewed by the ZBA to ensure that it is abiding by all the rules and regulations that currently operate within the, the zoning bylaw. Lauren?
Amy?
Nice to make a comment. The board can make a condition that they would need to get any sort of permits as, as required, but you can't make a determination that they must go to the zoning board. And I believe Karis could probably clarify this in a more eloquent fashion, but this is something that the board will make the, the, so have to close this hearing. You don't have to make a decision tonight. You can choose to deliberate at the subsequent hearing, but no matter what you do here, that decision will go to the building inspector and will follow suit when this applicant applies for a building permit, but it's not for the planning board to require an applicant to go before the zoning board, because that's something that the, the building inspector will make a determination on.
I, I could concur with you. I used the wrong language. Do we wish to leave the hearing open and continue to deliberate? Do we wish to make a statement of conditions? That seems what our two options are.
Last time, Tom drafted conditions.
Yeah, then they came after me for it, so I'm, I'm not doing it this time.
Hi. If you close this evening, you're going to have to file a decision within 14 days. I'd recommend, given the hour, that perhaps you continue to time a date certain, allow us to get to the second hearing and then do everything on one night so that you have a clear head, given that it's 10:22. That's, that's, see my hair? Like, that's, that's message.
I think that's a good recommendation. So
Well.
I can suggest a time and date. Our next meeting is May 26, and I would suggest something 45 PM if you're looking to continue.
I just ask a quick question procedurally, how it works, because I think it would be beneficial to, to continue it so that the conditions, but I don't know how that, where our limitations are to review conditions prior to the next meeting so that we can make it, so everyone can see them. I, I just like some clarification on that because it would be nice to sleep on it, get the conditions in writing, and then have the opportunity to review be prior to the next meeting, but I don't know with the open meeting law and all that other stuff, how that works.
Well, I think each of us could put together any conditions that we think might be appropriate for this large home review. And then go through everybody, whatever anybody's, except for Tom, whatever anybody's conditions might be.
Karis, could you just address that question, please?
Yeah. You would have to submit your proposed conditions to, to Lauren. And then you could discuss them at the next meeting.
Well, we can, can those conditions be circulated amongst us prior to the next meeting? So none of us would be able to see, like, I wouldn't be able to see Clark's, and Clark's, Clark wouldn't be able to see mine.
Yeah, but that can be a part of the next meeting where you have four conditions, I have two. Grady has one, and we say, this is what I think, and then we talk about each of them.
I mean, that's essentially what we did with the harbor plan, right?
Exactly.
Count our own comments. We gave them to Lauren. They were compiled. And then we worked through them as a part of the conditioning process.
Correct. And, and that's the, the appropriate way to do it.
So what kind of a motion would we make then at this moment if that was our choice?
We're just doing a motion to continue.
All right.
If I could just interject here, to the extent it is continued, we were respectfully asked of the planning board, given how long this project has been under review, that the date, new date be given be a short, a short date, the May 26 date will be appropriate, but if, to the extent we're extending this more, I just have to note for the record that the applicant would have to reserve its right, reserve, would reserve its right to pursue a mandamus action or other relief if the delay continues much longer than the next two weeks.
And ultimately, we, we do not want this to be any further.
So
I don't, I don't think.
Why don't you, you heard the comment. I, I would just move on to your motion.
The next available meeting date is May 26 at 7:45 PM.
So. I'll make a second.
All right, Clark Brewer?
Aye.
Eric Potter?
Aye.
Paul Grady?
Aye.
Tom Callahan?
Aye.
Last my aye. Thank you very much. Let's move on to the next case. I will read it. We're going to continue the hearing of the Cohasset zoning bylaw for an application for large house plan review filed by Eames Capital Partners LLC. The subject property is Wendy Hill Road Lot 32. House number pending, continuing from 414. Would the applicants like to begin?
Just, can I, can I ask, Karis, are we able to incorporate what we heard? You know, to the extent it overlaps? And so that we're not here another hour and then?
Right. That's a good suggestion, Tom.
If we can do it. I mean, they might have to make some particular presentation about this house, but a lot of the other stuff we talked about is overlapping what we've, you know, already discussed, so I don't want to reinvent the wheel.
There are differences by, by, certainly by the vegetation, there's differences.
Yeah. You need to let the applicant make their presentation, and if there are, I think that you were clear and that the public comments were for either application, and you, if there are additional public comments on this application, you should hear them, and then you can make your own comments, and you can, you know, reference your prior comments. They'll all be in the record.
All right, thank you.
I, I mean, I have a quick question that ended so abruptly that I'm a little unclear, since we are cross-referencing these two projects. A lot 31 that's continued to May 20, I didn't even catch the date.
26.
Two weeks.
What is required from us to prepare for that?
Nothing. It's, it's giving us time and clear heads to, to render the decision.
But weren't you supposed to have reviewed this material prior to this meeting?
Yes.
And did, and
I don't think you guys want to criticize us right now.
I, I really don't think you want to go there.
It's not a good idea.
We're not going there. We're just trying to understand.
No, I, I, no, you are, but that's okay. Just don't do it again.
The chair was pretty clear. It's 10:28. She just opened the hearing for the second night. And she wants the board to deliberate on all the information that was submitted and reviewed and discussed tonight with a clear head and an opportunity to think clearly about it.
Yeah, I understand that.
May we just continue this one, too?
I mean, I think it's important for the applicant to know that we cannot talk except for in the public. So we have no way to deliberate except for in the public, and then we have to contemplate.
But I think the applicant, whatever the applicant wants to go through, what, what has changed or what they've submitted that's, that's different than the last meeting that we had on this, just give them a chance to, to do that.
Okay, so, so for lot 32, the biggest changes from the last meeting is the landscape design changes. All other elements we had made changes prior to the last meeting, and, and no other design design concerns were brought up. I believe most of the concerns brought up were, were ledge removal and trees. So we'll, we'll kick this over to Jeff Hassett to discuss the revised landscape.
Okay. Thank you, Sean. So we, we already did kind of touch on the landscaping on this lot, but the entire lot is currently lawn with the exceptions of the areas that are hatched in green and in red. And the two areas in red are the areas where the existing vegetation does need to be removed in order to accommodate the grading for the house. And again, that's only 2,000 square feet. The intent of the landscaping plan is to preserve the vegetation along Jerusalem Road, and then also enhance it and add plantings to create separation and screening from the other abutting properties. So that, that is what they've accomplished here. This, the vegetation for screenings is primarily white and red cedars, white pines and red maples. So trees that primarily evergreens and trees that will grow fast and create some separation. They are proposing 39 trees, 29 bushes, and 80 ground cover plantings. As far as ledge, this house has a walkout basement on the easterly downhill side of the house. So in this area, there's the basement floor is above existing grade, so there's minimal, if any, ledge removal. There would be some ledge removal in the uphill portion of the, of the foundation. And then there's, the grade has to be lowered by about two feet to accommodate the garage so that the driveway isn't too steep. But they did eliminate the third bay to, the, the most significant ledge outcrop is right here. By eliminating the third bay, they cut that down quite a bit. So the ledge removal is only associated with the foundation, and I think we estimated that at about 2,000 square feet. I mean, 200 square feet, I'm sorry. And just like the lot, I noted on the lot before, the house has been placed in a location where it complies with all of the zoning setbacks. So, thank you.
Jeff, quick question. The area vegetation that's left remaining on the north side, I guess it is, on the Jerusalem roadside, what is, what is the depth of existing vegetation that's going to remain? I mean, is it 30 feet, 40 feet? To the, on the property line. What I mean by depth is the, the horizontal distance from what you're leaving alone to your property line.
Yeah, it's about 30 feet and then another 12 feet to the edge of pavement. Yeah, it's about thirty feet, and then another twelve feet to the edge of pavement.
And there's a, there's a walk, sidewalk along there that's very close to the property line? Or is that a wall? I'm just looking at the.
That's a wall.
Okay. Thank you.
I assume, assume thi- this line type here. That's a, yeah, it's an old wall that's kind of in, in the undergrowth.
So there's no, there's no, there's no sidewalk on that side?
No.
So then the overall depth of the vegetation, including the wall to the edge of pavement is, is more than thirty feet, it's like forty, forty-five feet, it varies?
Well, it says on the, the oh, I guess that you can't, I, I was thinking you had a measured edge, don't you, can, this is a, can you bring this into a G I S and actually just measure it?
Oh, I, I just checked it in AutoCAD.
And what is it?
So, so from here, from the limited clearing to the, the wall, the property line is about thirty feet. From there, you have another twelve feet to the edge of the pavement.
Okay.
Can you comment on the lighting plan? Particularly for the western edge and the eastern edge?
I will defer to Mr. Chariachi on that.
Sounds good. Good evening, John Chariachi again. I'm just sharing my screen. This, by the way, is the basement plan that was requested. Again, shows the, the reduced two-car garage, eleven-grade crawl space under the connection, and potential full height under the house with a walkout section back here, just wanted to go with that briefly. And the lighting plan, again, consists mostly of sconce or, you know, sconce and downlight fixtures. Let's see. The front of the house, I guess the the plan calls it west, but it's more, I think it's a more kind of southwest elevation. Again, the sconce lights are shown around the doors, there are a couple of downlights under this porch. There's no lighting currently shown on, on the, this side facade of the house, which I guess is the east, easterly facade. In the back where we have the deck, once again, sconce lights, and then another sconce light next to the single door coming out of the garage.
So there's no floods or spots?
Uh, no, not currently shown. There is one floodlight shown above the, the garage lighting the driveway, and again, that, and we submitted the cut sheet, I believe showing a shielded floodlight so that it's not disturbing to the neighbors, that's the only floodlight, so we're spotlights shown.
Is it dark star, dark sky compliant? Or just, just shielded with a, so that the lamping is doesn't shine on the neighbor's house?
Is the dark sky a, a specific requirement, like U L, or I'm not familiar, actually, is that, is that an exact?
No, usually the lighting manufacturers say if they're dark sky or not, basically.
Um, that could certainly be a condition, if you like it, so that whatever fixture selected, you know, would have to comply with that. I don't think that'll be an issue.
Um, sconce, i- i- is, is a sconce the only solution to the majority of the lights as opposed to a spin, something sticks on a spindle that's actually projecting light down? The reason is because even a sconce, even in a, in a L E D context, against a dark subject is going to show on the other side of the, of the pond.
Uh, it, it, it might, again, it's not extensive lighting, I think currently we're only showing two fixtures. But, but if, again, if you'd like to put in a condition that makes the outdoor lights downlights or gooseneck lights up as opposed to lanterns or sconces. Maybe could be addressed that way.
That would be really preferred, and what about the pool? We don't have any sense of what the lighting's going to be out on that area.
Hey, this isn't a large pool review, this is large house.
I know, but there's. Yeah, well, thank you, Clark, I'm glad to know. It's a little pool, no, it's a big pool. I, wha- what will be the lighting on that side of the, of the structure?
Currently, you know, it's not really in our purview, so we would have to consult with the landscape architect, whoever's going to be designing the pool and the pool patio, or those details to come up with what, whatever lighting will be around the pool. Or maybe Sean or Andrew could weigh in on that.
Yeah, typically around a pool, we put low, low-line landscape balers every, every eight feet or so, with, with some L E Ds inside the pool, low lit.
Thank you. Are there motion detector floodlights located anywhere?
Also, the single floodlight we discussed, that will be on a motion detector, the one above the driveway, the main driveway coming to the house.
All right, thank you. Planning board members, I'm going to go around and ask you, Tom Callahan, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Nope, no, I'm all good.
Clark Brewer.
Um, well, I mean, I, I have, I, I, I do want to say that I appreciate that the applicant's team put together the basement plan and has reduced some of those areas of, of the basement to help minimize the ledge removal. And, and I would say that the light fixtures that are in the package, they're, they're all attractive light fixtures. I think, Amy, your point of the lamping, if you have a strong L E D, yeah, sometimes it can be unbelievable across the water, you know, and I'll just give an example, I've got a, a neighbor who just put a floodlight on, on their garage, and I've got two hundred and fifty feet of woods, and it, it was unbelievable all winter, and now that the trees have all grown up, you know, it's not so bad. Yeah, but it shines like right on my front porch, and it's like two hundred and fifty feet away, and it's annoying, because the reason I love living in my place is it's dark all the time, and now it's not as dark. But I, I will say that the, that the design of the house, it's an attractive house, I think it's going to look good, it's, we've just got the same problem where it would would be great if the lot was twice as big, or the house was three-quarter size. And, but to a great extent, the, the house in front of it does some screening of the, of the back house, so it's, so it's quite a bit, and with this vegetation area to the, to the north on the Straits Pond side is, you know, it really kind of nestles this new house back there. Uh, so. And, and I will say, according to Henderson's letter, he clarified that the hundred and twenty-five foot lot width is from where the driveway is in parallel to that street, where the access is, as opposed to, in this case, where the frontage is, which is Jerusalem Road. And so they certainly have the hundred and twenty-five feet of width across that in that plane. So I, I've just thrown out a few kind of pluses and minuses, maybe. Interested to hear what other people have to say.
Um, all right, thank you. Eric Potter?
No further comment on this one right now.
Uh, Paul Grady.
I have no comments on it.
Um, all right, like, like before, I'd like to ask, what's the sentiment of the board?
Well, I, I think we should continue the hearing, and each of us should prepare whatever conditions we might have, if any, for this proposal in preparation for that next or continued hearing.
All right, I should say that there are two comments in the chat, or the question and answer, and I actually introduced them into my questions, so unless it is insufficient for Ms. Barrigan that I insufficiently represented her ideas, I think that there isn't anyone else in the, the question and answer. Lauren, is that true?
That is correct.
All right, so then, would someone please make a motion?
We need a.
We need a time and place.
That would be, that would be May twenty sixth at eight fifteen P M.
Can someone else make a motion?
I'll make a motion, we continue it to May twenty sixth at eight fifteen. Does it need to be, does it need to be eight fifteen, do we think? I'm, I'm just asking if the first one would take that long.
Thirty minutes.
Yeah, I, 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 I can't get a sense of what everybody else thinks, so how long will it take?
Well, since it will be passed, it will be past town meeting, won't we?
Yes. It's the two days after town meeting.
Yeah, I guess what I would say is I'd like to keep the time increments equal, and if it turns out that we do this very swiftly, that we use that time that is available to do other business rather than trying to guess how long.
We, we can't schedule it earlier, we can, we can deal with it later, why don't we just schedule it for eight and see what happens?
Si, yeah, so we'd have them be concurrent.
So you're changing your motion?
Changing my motion to eight P M, yes.
I'll second it.
All right.
Brewer, aye.
Tom Callahan.
Aye.
Eric Potter.
Eric Potter, aye.
Paul Grady.
Aye.
Amy Glassmire, aye. Thank you very much. That concludes, or that continues the hearing until the twenty eighth of May?
Twenty sixth.
Twenty sixth of May, sorry.
Can I ask a question if that's all right?
You may.
For, just so I'm clear on this, so during the next two weeks, you, you will provide conditions at the next meeting?
Yeah.
We, we will each individually make our determinations based on the discussions for these two projects. They will be sent to Lauren, Lauren will compile them, we will bring them back to the next meeting. That will be when we will deliberate, and whatever the conditions are, there'll be a subset of the conditions potentially that would apply.
I thought we had talked about not, not bringing the conditions until the next meeting. Just bring them individually. But do you think if we send all of our potential conditions for discussion that Lauren should compile them and put them on a piece of paper or, or on a P D F, and then we'll, we'll all have them not knowing who they came from? Or, how do you think that could work?
Well, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just thinking about how we did the harbor project, which was that we sent our comments and they were compiled.
No.
Yeah, it's different, though, this is, this is.
That's not what we do.
Okay. Find another way.
No, the, the, the anticipation for, for, for Mr. Richards, the anticipation is that you're going to have a decision on the twenty sixth, that's the goal.
But will we work together?
In, in the format of how we do it, I, I'm going to suggest that it will make sense if individuals have conditions to suggest. Send them to Lauren, Lauren will have them compiled for us, we'll have them all in one place, and you know, then on the twenty sixth, we vote on accepting them or not accepting them in making a decision. You're going to get a decision that says you build the house, but the question is, are we going to add conditions to it or not add conditions to it? I think the most expeditious thing is to send them to Lauren ahead of time, individually, if we, if we want to offer a condition, and have, Lauren will have them compiled, we open the hearing, we see them all, we vote on what ones we want to accept or not accept, and, you know, you'll have your decisions.
And I think it's important that they're not attributable. They're not, that condition number one was brought up by Brewer. I don't think we need to do that.
I stuck my neck out last time.
That's right, well, so Tom, so here's the thing, so here's the thing. You can come up with any condition and no one will know it was yours, but we'll probably know from how it's written. But you know what I mean? It's not attributable, so if, if nobody knows, we come up with a condition, then we just discuss them one at a time, and then see what we can get for a motion.
I can assure you I'm not writing any for this one.
And let me just suggest that as part of the compilation, Lauren can eliminate duplicate conditions.
Right.
Um, and I can work with her on language without impacting the substance of the condition, just to make sure it's clear and consistent. So she can share them with me without violating the open meeting law, and then you'll get the conditions in your package of meeting materials.
And essentially, we'd be, the planning board members would be negotiating these and discussing them. And.
Correct.
And, and would we close the public hearing?
Yeah.
And then discuss these things, and then.
So is the public hearing closed after this, or is the public hearing at the next, that's what I'm, I'm just.
No, we're still in a public hearing, well, well, we're not in a public hearing anymore. We're talking about logistics of a, of a public hearing that we just closed.
The answer is, we have not closed the public hearing.
Okay.
Meaning, Mr. Richard, that you have the opportunity to submit anything new you would want to. But the objective appears to be that as soon as we open the hearing, if there's no new information, we close the hearing and then deliberate on, on a decision.
So will we be involved in working through these conditions, or are these just conditions that you will vote on amongst yourselves and?
I'd say, I'd say probably not.
So we won't?
You won't see them in advance, because you will not, because the planning board won't see them in advance. They'll be discussed at the hearing, i- i- if it's the planning board's will or wish, you can provide your input at the, at the public hearing, but that's up to the planning board. If they're willing to entertain your input.
We've already talked about this, we closed, and, and the, we closed the public hearing for tonight.
Right, 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 I'm just trying to get clarity around it, that's all. I didn't know if it was like a, we work things together and come up with conditions, or you just impose conditions and and that's the way it works.
Well, well, the, the decision is ours, I mean, there was reference to the harbor project, which was much longer, much more detailed, we went over, we went over conditions over the course of two meetings, if not three, you know, because they were close to a hundred of them, and we couldn't share them with the applicant ahead of time, but we, in that particular project, I believe we took suggestions from the applicant for conditions. But that was a different kind of project that was, was going to have conditions, it was a special permit project. This one doesn't necessarily have to have conditions, so you know, whether you want to suggest something or not is up to you, but you know, it, it's a different kind of decision and a different kind of project.
Until we close the hearing, we can receive information.
What?
I said until we close.
Yeah, but I, I'm, I'm saying this is not a project where you necessarily, you know, the special permit, you know there's going to be conditions, this one you don't necessarily need conditions to make the decision. But if you think that is what is going to happen, and you want to suggest a condition, you're free to do that. Just submit it before the twenty sixth so that we can consider it.
Right, and you would, you would submit it to Lauren?
Yes.
All right.
Not to us, yes.
Right, we don't, the information goes in a triangle. Clark Brewer?
Yeah, I was just going to say, yeah, if they have some conditions that they think would be great for us to entertain based on the conversations that we had, then I'd say all, all four, but I, I really, I don't think we should be talking about this anymore.
Okay.
We close the public hearing for tonight.
No, we're not talking substance, we're talking logistics.
I know.
All right, so I think we have the logistics worked out. Can I get a, a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Tom Callahan.
Aye.
Clark Brewer.
Mark Brewer, aye.
Eric Potter.